We'll call the meeting to order and rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in commonwealth.
Good evening, everyone. I want to remind you that these microphones now are covering the entire room. Every side conversation, every whisper, every rattle of papers can be heard, and it does transfer onto the TV. So just be very careful and don't say anything about somebody else to your neighbor because we might hear it. They're very touchy, but it does help us in our media gathering here while. Eric told us there's a lot of background noise on the video because of papers and conversations. I just want to address one thing first off. There was a resignation letter by the coroner that was sent to the clerk's office, and I have a statement that debunks most of that and gets our position on that. So I'm going to read that to have that onto the record right now. The newspaper printed it, but they didn't ever call and ask for our statement, so don't get it tonight. So there's an elected official's resignation letter being published that discredits Wayne County Council, and the letter has no merit. Mr. Kevin Truchet wrote a letter of resignation which included many untrue statements. A few weeks ago, he phoned the council president, which is me, stated he had found a full-time job out of town that was too good to pass up. He would be submitting a letter of resignation as his term does not end until 12/31/24. There was no mention of any of these unfounded accusations in his letter. Mr. Truchet knew the job and the pay when he ran through the office. Council has always provided him with the requests needed to fulfill his job and has provided his department with the best office space they have occupied in many years. We will move forward from this misguided attempt to create a bad situation and continue to provide the fiscal responsibility our taxpayers deserve. That's from the Beth Ledger President of Council. Now, on to more lighthearted things. Let's have the approval of the minutes from last workshop.
Go blue.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Move and approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? And all in favor of the motion, signify with a second. Aye.
Madam President, I would also like to move that to commissioners. The Commissioner's president respond to the same board of accounts as a result of our meeting with them today.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor of the motion, signify with a second. Aye.
Aye.
That is a second side. Motion due.
What was your motion? I didn't understand.
That the President, the Commissioners...
Don't respond.
Provide an official response to mandatory response.
Mr. Higginbotham, we are ready for you.
I'd like to have here a new bylaw to report in front of you. Couple of changes from the last time. The generator, it says we're waiting to deliver to the generator. It is here in Indiana now, and we're waiting for the transfer switch to arrive at the same time. You don't use a crane to set that piece of equipment when they get here at the same time. And then I have a meeting with the contractor next Monday so that we can coordinate the power outage that we're going to have to create for the 911 folks when we put the new generator in. And I told you, Matthew, this is going to be the last time that we have to put you in the mobile command center for a period of time. But that will be a coordinated effort between 911 and the IT department because there will also be some servers that will need to come down at the same time. Chamber of Technology, everything is in. Obviously, we're in the midst of now tweaking everything to, as we move from place to place, to the different meeting setup. But the control panel is in, all the extra speakers are in, all the microphones are functional. So Caleb is back here in the background, and he'll be tweaking some of this as we go along, but hopefully in the next couple of weeks, it's just going to be as simple as going up to the front and pushing a button. The courthouse elevator study, we should have something back on that in about four weeks. They've done the study, and so they're putting together some options for commissioners and council to evaluate. The Coleman Center roof and Coleman Center ceiling and lighting project, those are two separate bids that have gone out. The Commissioners will be receiving those bids on September 11th. There is a pre-bid meeting on September 4th. Once we get those bids in hand and have a number, then we'll come back to council and discuss then the potential financing of those two projects. The first bank expo hall, HBAC, it is in and operational. Punch list items that were created are being completed. They were putting on the insulation on the outside of the ductwork today, and at that point then they'll paint, and that project will also come to a close. We also used it for the first time last weekend. We had a very large rental in the expo hall, MacDon, which is a large international farm equipment manufacturer, had their regional training there where we had three large combines in the hall that all the technicians from around the area would come and receive training on. So it worked really well. And then the Fairgrounds Works Barn Roof, that is just about completed. The contractor indicated that that should be completed before the end of the week, and then that project will come to a close. Then we, the Commissioners signed the architect-engineer contract for the landscape hardscape, and when that evolves and we get some, start getting some numbers in, again, we'll come back to council and discuss that further as we drill down what that scope of that project might look like. Then, as always, in the lower right-hand corner are your fund balances. The far up to lower right-hand corner, what you have committed out of your one-time account is 53,738, and then in the council's one-time appropriated fund balance is just a little over $1 million. Any questions? That's all I have at.
That's great. Thank you.
Just a couple of things. One is the Commissioners received a letter from Achiever Resources, their Guardian program that we have funded the part of the match for the grant from the Indiana Supreme Court for several years. They're requesting again that they be funded at $16,000, which has been the number for four or five years, I believe. And the Commissioners voted to endorse that, carrying it to you tonight, asking you to keep that in your budget. It's been a line item, I think, in the council budget for several years now as well. So we do endorse that, continuing that project. We are working very diligently on the HELP program implementation. Two things that we have discussed again today. One is the housing infrastructure project. Actually, there are two line items in the HELP plan totaling about $160,000. We're proposing that, to put out a request for proposals to developers. Remember, with this money, this is going to be on the HELP plan. It would be for housing developments outside of the incorporated areas, but that would utilize the sewer water electric capabilities that municipal municipalities have. So it would not be for developments that would use septic and well, but it would be close enough to be able to utilize the municipal services. So that, we anticipate, will go out in the next few weeks. See if there are applications for grant funding before the end of the year that we could contract with. If not, we'll need to look at alternative uses for those funds. We also discussed today entering a contract with a local veterinarian to continue the work that we've been doing in the animal welfare area. That would be a four-month contract using the existing HELP dollars that have been allocated by the county and the city. So it would be a collaborative venture between the county and the city to continue that work, to identify where we go from here with animal welfare issues. Also discussed in the Fleet Management Committee this afternoon, the possibility of using additional ARBA funds that are currently uncommitted for purchase of vehicles for upcoming year. There's about $300,000, I believe, that's uncommitted at the moment. I think we're going to hear from Ritter Strategic Services about another possible use of those uncommitted funds. So we'll see where we end up with that commitment.
You said for the Fleet Committee was recommending...
Fleet Committee recommends that that be a consideration as we allocate the remaining uncommitted resources. Would be to consider spending some of those dollars on purchase of vehicles for...
You know how many...
No specific...
Amount.
We specifically talked about five sheriff's vehicles that have been requested, and the cost for those five vehicles would go somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000, which would use up about everything that's currently uncommitted. Again, that would potentially replace an expenditure from the general fund. I think the Commissioners would hope that that money would be kept in the general fund to be utilized on a project or projects that all 10 of us are in agreement on, Council and Commissioners, of how those funds should be spent. We'll see what the options are of how we commit any uncommitted remaining ARBA dollars.
I just want to emphasize that that's the Fleet Committee, not the Commissioners with that recommendation.
That is correct. That is the Fleet Committee.
The thought behind that, or a major part of it, is we're coming up close to the end of the year. We don't know if all of the funds that have been allocated for things will be spent, and if we end up at the end of the year and we don't spend all that money or get it all committed, we've got to send it back, and we don't want to do that.
So we want to make sure we have a list of alternatives that we can do.
So we really need, between now and the end of the year, have more of that money committed than what we have, and come back if it's not used or if the money's not available. These cars, we have the general fund, which we normally do anyway. So I think it's a kind of a risk prevention tool. We are forced to make sure we get this money utilized.
Absolutely.
Jeff, this list that you gave us a while ago, is it still on the list?
Not necessarily.
What's the roof shortfall?
I'm sorry?
What's the roof shortfall? 225? 225?
That's the roof project that is currently being bid on Fairgrounds Coleman.
Okay.
Works Barn is funded. The Coleman Center, remember, we've increased the scope of that project so that it's not only the exterior roof, but it's also the ceiling inside Coleman where the tiles would be replaced, the light fixtures would be replaced to update all of that. And we're anticipating that it'll be more than we currently had allocated. So that was the recommendation. We have not voted, we have not revisited it since we presented it to you, and you all opted to not endorse that at that time. So again, there are a lot of moving parts with committing ARBA funds. We do need to nail that down and to get this back set. I would anticipate that we want to over-commit and have to switch some of it to other funds to pay for rather than under-committing, and we end up having to send some of that money back to the federal government.
I think most of these things will have bids or pretty good numbers by the end of September, right? So that we can...
Correct.
I think we should do that because the last quarter goes fast, and...
Exactly.
You need to have a plan. Okay.
And these vehicles will not be acquired very soon, so we're not going to spend the money and then wish we hadn't.
Yeah.
That's going to happen possibly after the first of the year.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Plaster?
If not, Debbie Barry? You can just come up to where, right next to Mr. Plaster.
So the reason I'm on the agenda today is, as you know, we had those funds that we had requested to transfer from County General to the Clerk's Perpetuation Fund. So that is why those two transfers, moving line from 11060, from the Clerk's Dapity, $28,949.05, to the Clerk's Perpetuation Fund.
And why does the... And this is because you were in the red?
Correct.
The Perpetuation Fund was, had run out of money?
Over time, was in the red.
We were funding...
Yeah.
Oh.
Part of the salary...
Yeah, that's right. Okay.
In there, and we knew we could do that for a period of time, but at some point it would need to be transferred back to the general fund. So this is transferring it to the perpetuation from the general fund to get that back in the red. And then, do you also want to talk about requesting the new line item, seasonal part-time?
Yes.
Refresh my memory if we've already talked about it, Debbie?
Well, we did, but I didn't. Of course, those two transfers, Tony, are for this year's budget, and that line item is for the 2025 budget, so it's not for this year. So I would like to, I'm requesting to create a new line item, 13610, for seasonal part-time.
That's for 2025?
For 2025, yes.
And how much do you want that funded for?
$11,000. This is for my summer intern that comes in because what happened, I used to be permitted, if you recall, to pay all of my interns out of one line item, and that changed three years ago. So that's why I'm wanting to create a new line for...
Right. Wouldn't we just put that in the budget? We don't have to...
Yeah. I just wondered how much to put in there. Okay.
Yeah. When we get to the budget part, you don't need to stay around, Debbie, but we'll get that added when we bring the budget out.
Thank you.
We do need, I'm sorry, I kind of did that.
You're okay. It's okay.
We do need a motion on the two transfers.
Tony, I have a good question about that. So if we're going to move the money to fix the, what's in the red, where is that employee going to be paid from? Right now, that's just an unused employee salary line. Oh, okay. Okay. It's an empty line, so it's got money in it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to motion, we like the transfers.
We have a motion and a second on the two transfers from the clerk's office. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. And I have all the papers for you, Debbie.
Thank you.
And then she has a request for this new council.
That will be in, when we pull up the 2025 budget, we'll need to go to that and put that in for $11,000, but we don't need to make any motion to create a new line since it's going to be in next year's budget, and we won't be approving that, so...
Do I need to say?
No.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have a Baker Tilly engagement letter. Do you have it?
I sent to you and Ron the updated...
I want to print it out.
If it passes, mine is in lobby, she can print it off and sign it later, I guess.
We've been talking, you know, we've been talking to Baker Tilly. We talked about it at our last meeting, to work on a plan for the next several years, and we just need approval to sign an engagement letter with them to do the work.
I'll make the motion that we authorize the President to sign the engagement with Baker Tilly.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's in our emails. We'll print it out and I'll sign that, so that we can get that song to them.
Now, Gary Ritter and Matthew Kane about the tower project budget.
Jay, you've all been waiting for. And Matthew is here along with Aaron for any operational questions that you might have. What do you want to say before I start? So the emergency communications project discussions began in mid-2023, and really came to formation with the development of the HELP projects and the budget that was approved. And I know most of you in this room know a lot of this, but based on the numbers we're looking at, I want to provide some background for the viewing public and for anyone that may not understand how long we've been working on this and what we're looking at. So those in public safety and those members in the community groups working on that overall plan for where coverage concerns in northeast Wayne County and southwestern part of Wayne County, coverage issues that we've been dealing with in public safety for 25 or 30 years. Ultimately, the communications project was funded through the original HELP with an amount of $1.5 million. And that $1.5 million tag was based on general conversations of if we have to build towers, what do you think it would take? And where do you think we'll need them? Are we going to need one, or are we going to need two? So we, you know, we subsequently agreed on that $1.5 million. And we've had a lot of conversations over recent months about where we were going to end up. At the time, we knew there were coverage deficiencies, but we were not aware of the extent or what technology or what resources would solve those problems. Matthew and his team, the public safety agencies across the county, have been relying on an antiquated VHF system that had Band-Aids put on it for a number of years. And in lieu of just continuing to work on the VHF system, discussion began to look at doing an assessment. Being the public safety consultant for Wayne County, my firm was contracted to conduct a comprehensive assessment of the radio usage in the county, the systems that the agencies provide. And at the end of that assessment, we recommended to the Commissioners that they move forward with a transition to integrate Public Safety Commission's trunk 800 system. It's a statewide system built by the state, provided to local government, free of charge to be utilized. We determined that specifications should be written to facilitate that transition with specific coverages in southwest Wayne County and northeast. We did additional propagation mapping to the finest detail to establish the specifications that a vendor would propose against. Something unique about IPSEC's statewide system is that's a contract afforded to Motorola Solutions by the state, and they are the only vendor that can deploy technology on towers for radio systems. So it's a sole source through that contract that they hold with the state. Once we developed the specifications, we began working with the engineers from Motorola for them to develop a solution to address our problems in those two geographical areas. Motorola just recently submitted their proposal, and we are currently involved in the QA back and forth between our team, Wayne County, and Motorola and IPSEC to refine the proposal as presented by Motorola. They did propose some options that we had asked for in the specifications. We do agree with Motorola's solution, that the coverage that it will provide is the best that we can ask for for in-building coverage as well as outdoor coverage, type 1 structures across the county as a whole. Their solution also solves a longstanding issue for communications issues with the Richmond Police Department on the east side of the city, as well as Reed Hospital EMS and the fire department. And then it solves the issues in the southwest part of the county for areas east of Cambridge City, going north of Forte, cross-country, almost to economy, in solving that issue. We also asked for vendors to provide pricing for pagers and mobiles and portables for volunteer fire departments, and as much as the dependency on the VHF system is not there, and we would have to transition those agencies over to 800. We did a comprehensive survey and inventory of the assets that would be needed by those departments to understand what vendors would have to submit pricing for. We've received pricing from two vendors currently for the end-users, and we're waiting on a third proposal that should be in in the next week, I would guess. We've recommended the models of the radios that should be used, and they are proven to work on the system flawlessly from what we can determine by talking to current users. Understanding that this project was originally identified for improving the communication capability of volunteer fire departments, the system that was recommended, the system that's been designed to be deployed, will have an ultimate benefit for all public safety agencies in the county. So it's a system that the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, the outline police departments, Reed EMS, the volunteer fire departments, all will benefit from the additional coverages that will be afforded by the system that has been proposed. We agree with Motorola's proposal, the system designed, and that it's exactly what we were asking for in the specifications, but we don't agree with their price. And so we've entered into this question-and-answer period, and soon we'll begin negotiating contractual elements with Motorola, given the county affords the opportunity for the funding to move forward. As it sits today, with the proposals that we have, you have a document before you that is a working document, and the project budget estimate as it stands today is just over $3.7 million, which is significantly higher than what any of us anticipated, understanding that most jurisdictions who would build the systems such as we're looking at here and are building their own towers, you're looking at double-digit millions of dollars for that. We were fortunate in Wayne County to find a private tower vendor that we are looking at entering into a public-private partnership for them to... for them to be responsible for building the towers. And we would simply put our equipment for a lease price on their tower. Fortunately for that public partner, public-private partnership, say that again, for every tenant that's put on those towers and a lease is afforded from the vendor, the county experiences a credit towards the lease price that we would pay. In today's world, we can pay a lease payment for two towers for equipment for a lot of years before we reach the cost of actually paying for the construction of our own towers. So we're at 3.7 million today. There are items on this document that I've provided to you that we can utilize to sharpen the pencil and reduce the budget. But I've told commissioners and I've told council that tonight was the night that we'd bring a number to you for us to begin having conversations about to what extent is this project going to move forward and how is it going to be paid for? And the ARPA dollars, the leftover ARPA dollars, I did meet with Max this week. He's been made aware of this and has begun identifying potential solutions for funding options because he's better versed in that than I am in county government. But the one thing he did ask for was, or less McGanchar, for a payment over time, what we would be looking at. And on page two, that those estimated prices at my quarter for the remainder of this year and through the end of 2025 to pay for the system. So with that, I guess I would yield my breton to try and answer any questions that you might have.
So let me say just a few things as I delay as a lot to this group from council. We really are in a situation that our options are limited. If we do not implement all of this and retain the old VHS system, we're gonna have a lot of maintenance expense, a lot of other issues, not counting the fact that they don't have adequate communication. I think that it's, this is a thing that we really, in one way or another, have got to do. And how we assist the local volunteer fire departments and police departments to be able to use this and get the adequate equipment is one of the things that we can discuss. Barry has pointed out some items in this document that could help reduce this cost. And we need to know and remember that this is probably the top-end cost. If things, unless something unknown comes up, it might be less, but shouldn't be more.
We did not build in a contingency for this project. Any unforeseen, obviously, are the unknowns, but are controllable. You know, as we look at diminishing, we got a deficit here of projected 1.9 million, call it 2 million. Going through the Motorola proposal, at the base of those towers are communication structures. Any of you have seen those at a cell tower? It's a concrete building that sits at the bottom of that on a concrete pad that's secure, that's grounded. You know, those buildings' generator and backup fuel and the Motorola price is pushing a million dollars. Well, I know sitting here, I can buy those buildings a lot cheaper from another vendor and sub that out to save money. So that's a, that's a significant area that I think that we can target to cut some of the cost off. If something else comes up, I'd be surprised, but you know how that goes.
But if we plan on this dollar amount and we get these other options that can reduce that, then we basically got a contingency there to work with until we get this implemented. In our discussions yesterday, Barry, I thought some of this would carry over into 2026, but I see that you think this will all be done in '25?
We had a call with Motorola today. And given the change in the ability to get technology and infrastructure and steel, they projected that if we entered into an agreement with them in the fourth quarter of this year, they would be completed by the end of '25.
I think we also need to point out that Motorola is the only vendor that we could deal with on a lot of this because they have the state system, which we're tying into. And when we can purchase equipment for this through another company that works well, and Barry referenced that, we can do that. But there's a lot of this basic stuff, that's, that's the only choice. They got us over a barrel on some of that.
The end-user equipment Motorola submitted a quote on as well as another vendor for another manufacturer. We're waiting on the third. We expect to, that to be cost savings that's already included in these numbers. But the Motorola price for their end-user equipment was quite a bit more.
But as he said, the other end-user brands have been looking very well for other agencies throughout the state. So there's really no reason for us to not take advantage of those.
So where we, we are at tonight is the private tower company is sending me a land lease agreement that I'll forward on to Ron for his review for the tower location at County Highway. They're also working with private landowners in the other area of the county. And as that comes to fruition, for them to be able to execute an agreement there, they'll have to do the same with the county. So they can do all of the federal filings, inspections, soil sampling at both sites at the same time.
All right, does anybody have questions?
I do, I just want to clarify what Max said. If we, if we don't do all of this, that some people out in the county would have issues with maybe making a 911 call or something. Doesn't go through what's, what's, what was Max saying about the equipment doesn't work correctly or something?
They wouldn't have any problem making a 911 call. This is the, the radio side for dispatch. So those agencies who today have difficulty, and Matthew, you can speak better than I if you want to address this.
Yeah, it's, it's almost an issue if we don't do it now, we're gonna be having this conversation five years or 10 years. Something's going to have to be done because the system we currently have, I ran out of Band-Aids to put on it. And it is strictly for the radio, has nothing to do with phone calls we receive. It's strictly the radio communication we have with both law enforcement currently on the 800 megahertz system. And then migrating the volunteer fire departments, all 12 of them in the county, to this newer technology. They're using an older analog technology, utilizing three different tower sites in the county currently.
So I'm just, I'm just simplifying for the people watching. But so when the 911 call comes in, you dispatch or you send the call out to Economy, Gary's fire station there. But that radio may not always work with to get ahold of them or when they're, when the truck's gone, may not get ahold of them to say, come back or we need more or whatever.
Correct.
Is that okay?
Correct. And, and using Gary as an example, and that fire department particularly, Mr. Saunders and I have had several discussions on the quality of radio where he'll say, well, my pager went off, but I couldn't hear the voice at all. And, you know, we can only tweak certain things in dispatch to try to improve that. And some of it just comes down to old infrastructure.
So we'll either continue with that or we're gonna do this and try to fix some of those things. Or we'll wait 10 more years and it's gonna be even worse, basically, apparently. Thank you.
And more expensive.
The frustration with departments occur out there overseas. You got a roaring fire, you can't link communication with anybody, you get a dead spot. Hopefully this will eliminate those dead spots that we have that really is critical at times.
It would actually then, there's a component of this that sometimes gets overlooked, but it would actually increase interoperability with some of our surrounding counties. So they or may not know, but a portion of Franklin Township in the far northeast part of the county is actually covered by Hollinsburg, Ohio, by contract. Currently, when Hollinsburg has a fire in that area of the county, they are on the 800 megahertz system and cannot communicate with the fountain city fire who goes to assist them. And so they literally can be at the same scene across a barn lot and cannot talk to each other. And so this would actually increase interoperability. Reinhold County is in the process of switching entirely to 800 megahertz as well. So there, not today, but there would come a day that it would improve interoperability with that as well.
Thank you for clarifying that.
No, absolutely.
Also, having a new tower at the highway department location that will improve the highway department's radio traffic as well.
Yeah, and that, that was part of the quote, was it not?
That is not in the quote enough. But in the dollar amount, we will have to, because Motorola does it. The many equipment they own, and that equipment out there is not Motorola equipment. But the plan is to move the antennas that's on the current tower over to the new tower, thus resulting in Mike's guys being able to communicate from the northwest part.
So I guess what I'm looking for here is an agreement that this is a project that the county is, is, you know, supporting and that we can move forward with these vendors and negotiations and conversations. I would just comment that I think this is a critical project for us. We need to move it forward. It's obviously more money than we anticipated, but it's a project that has been necessary probably for 20 to 30 years. And, and I think we're close enough now that we really need to follow through. We need to see what kind of, of negotiations are available, what we can get the final number to reasonably, and then look at our resources, not just ARPA, but others, and see where we're at. And there, there could be still some projects that we have other ARPA commitments involved in that we may decide are more important or that this project is more important and we move some of those resources. So, but we need to do that quickly in the next 30 days maybe to have a final decision on this project, what we can move forward with or is not. Again, I personally, very, very interested to work on, continue to work on.
Do you know if there's grant funding that might help with that? Any ideas, anybody?
You know, the, the grant funding for Public Safety Communications dried up several years ago. There's been some grant money for end-user equipment. But last year, out of all the departments who applied for that, there were only three departments across the state of Indiana who successfully were awarded money.
Motorola has been known to lock in more and more municipalities and counties' emergency communications because of the threat from emerging technology. I've been reading a lot of trade magazines online. The current issue of EMS One magazine is particularly focusing on the new technologies that will replace Motorola. If I could just read one paragraph from this current article. Says what threatens Motorola is the possibility that technology advances could within a few years enable ruggedized cell phones to transmit voice communications as reliably as two-way radios, a development that eventually could crumble the company's radio franchise, which serves thousands of public safety agencies. One Motorola tactic for penetrating the new market has been to donate equipment as the company did in Chicago and other places. I just wonder if, knowing that our obsolescence and aging equipment is in the need of replacement, are we in fact investing in the canal system on the verge of the development of the railroad? Yeah, if we're to invest such a millions of dollars on the brink of new technology replacing this, should we do a bit more research into emerging technology before we make this commitment right now?
Motorola is like the AT&amp;T in the world, like the, the Maugnall. I mean, the, the latest, the greatest, the most advanced engineering. And you're right, they have the corner on the market. In this particular instance, they're the sole source. We have no other option but to use Motorola. To not do something based on that would be, this is not Matthew's term, but would be short-sighted in the deficiency of what we have. So while we see what may happen in the future, we can't predict. Now, the industry drives the market. It doesn't matter if it's in the cell world or any other technology. And Matthew, you're gonna throw something at me here, but, you know, you bought a radio system two years ago, right? Two and a half years ago?
Talking about 7500.
7500.
2020.
2020. Should have a long lifespan. They told us today in five years, they're gonna be out of life. So in five years, we're gonna look at another major purchase in the PSAP for stuff that we used to get a lot longer use out of. But in the public safety world and government, we don't really have a choice when they no longer support that technology.
I just question whether we've been real vigorous in pursuing emerging technology to be confident that it's five years away or four years away or is it possibly two years away? I know I brought this up before in Ox Board and other places because there's so much been written about it in the trade magazines and the likes that we just have not had that serious discussion about how fast is this technology going to be in serious competition with new technology?
I, I don't know that we would ever be able to predict that. And I think we could almost make that argument for any, any piece of equipment we were even looking at buying. Things are changing so often right now. But the industry standard still is land-mobile radio, period. There are other things emerging, but they are not public safety grade. They are not foolproof, they are not guaranteed to work 100% of the time like public safety grade land-mobile radio is as we sit here today.
All I'm reading is military and public safety communications trades. That's all I'm posting, military and public safety.
So I, I don't even know where we would look for emerging technologies to be quite truthful because they're not promoting them because it's simply not an industry standard right now.
Even thinking about relying on cell phone towers?
Say that again, sorry.
Thinking about relying on cell phone towers makes me nervous.
Right. And which a lot of those, some of that emerging technology does. They're an app on your phone that connects to a radio somewhere.
If it works.
If it works and you have cell coverage. Well, the, the areas that we are seeing radio coverage issues in Wayne County, the far northeast and southwest, gosh, I'll be darned, also has cell phone coverage issues that we located, that we discovered during this process. So using cell towers or cell signals, while, yes, they are adding towers from time to time, something I wouldn't want to hang my hat on.
Which is why cell is not the only emerging technology. Satellite is probably the one for the launch of the future.
So would you just like a vote of support from council or?
I don't, I don't know that we need a vote. I think this just.
This needs to get moved.
You've been asking me for a price.
Thanks, you gave it to us.
I don't know, I don't know.
Be careful what you ask for.
Exactly.
I gave you a price, and we just need to be aware of that because as we, you know, we engage Motorola in the next, you know, two weeks for contract negotiations, we're gonna engage commissioners, we're gonna engage Ron. I just want to know that we've, we've got commitment there for money over the next 18 months to whatever that number comes out to be.
I'm just suggesting that this county happens to know that Motorola has been known to donate equipment in order to lock us in for the future. I, I'm not suggesting you have a bad tough negotiator, but boy, this project is a lot bigger than what I'd hoped to see. And, you know, we could maybe be even more vigorous and rigorous than we've ever been before in trying to get them to move closer to what I think is affordable for a county our size.
We'll do everything we can.
Just more donation, need us 75% of the way.
I don't really like.
Place to start. I mean, they're giving away to other municipalities, why not us?
I trust that they will tough negotiate with the county. Anything else on this?
I just think we need to know the updates inside 30 days so that we can evaluate this as we move forward and move forward on commitments by the end of the year. Is that possible?
Depending on which vendor we go with for like say the, the end user equipment, I have, I had a 60-day time commitment on that cost. They extended it 30 days for me because of supply and demand. So in all likelihood, in the next 30 days, we're gonna come back to you with a recommendation in the quotes for that part of the project for commissioners to approve so we can lock that price in.
Well, it would be commissioners and council if it's more than 1.5 million.
It's not. Yes, I will keep you updated.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I feel like we need to move forward with this. Public safety as well as your emergency communications or fire department, your police and all that will serve benefit to all of those in Wayne County. So I think we need to move forward with this.
And the citizens are the ones that kind of brought this to the forefront, quite frankly. I believe it was a community engagement meeting, was it not? Yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much. Mary and Max, do you have a call for a personnel thing to handle?
I gotta follow that.
Make this all up.
I mean, it's less than 3.9 billion.
I know this is unorthodox, but as we prepare for next year's budgets, we have some things there at the health department that we're trying to sort out. We have three independent contractors and my request is to turn those contractors into full-time medical assistant county employees.
Are those three full-time or is one a part-time?
Excuse me?
Are those three full-time or is one a part-time?
All three are full-time. So what I've done is I broke it down as far as the cost per, per medical assistant.
And you have the money to take this?
Correct, and it shows here on this document where, where the money's gonna come from. And the dollar amount is based on worst-case scenario, that's employee plus family contributions.
How's these figures compared to what you have with contractual? Close, true?
They're close, as the contracts were at one point in time, $25 per hour for that employee, and then we gave that contractual company 30% on top of that wage.
So Kim, where, where are we at and what do we need? What can we do tonight?
With these three positions? I think simply council voting to accept the three positions, we will have to create three new line items after that. I would need to push for salary ordinance and three salary ordinance amendments.
Do we have in place the job descriptions and classification for these three?
Yes, there's already an existing job description because it's a medical assistant and it's a common 32180, so.
And that's what this proposal is?
Yes, so we can move quickly on it after approval.
There's, there's several reasons we need to get this done because of switching, need to switch from the, being the contract to being an employee. And the sooner we get that resolved, the better we will be.
We want to retain these people.
Yeah, we want to retain them.
They're good people, we want to retain, so.
And my proposal for the remainder of this year is to pay them out of our Health First Indiana funding or contractual line. We have approximately $300,000 left in that line, and our commitment for the rest of this year could probably be around $158,000. That's if all of our subcontractors invoices from that side. I've not received invoices from Reed Hospital or Bridge or Life, so we are sitting on a large surplus in that particular line in that fund.
Okay. Any questions?
No, but I would just make the comment, I have worked with Dan and, and Dr. Ryder, and I would support moving these people to full-time in that 1161 Health First Indiana Fund because if the fund goes away, then we no longer have those employees, so they're paying for it, not on the general fund.
Yeah, I just have one quick question. We're voting on, these being county employees, they're not gonna be payment to Reed Hospitals, is that correct?
Excuse me?
What you're asking us to vote on in personnel is adding these three county employees, nothing to do with Reed Hospital.
Correct. What I'm showing you with Reed Hospital, these three entities are subcontractors as ours doing jobs for us in a sense. So this is the money to the right that we owe those subcontractors.
Thank you. It's my understanding that the health board did approve proceeding with this after being.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Doctor Ryder, do you have anything to add?
No, I, I think this is something that we need to fix that's been a problem for us for quite some time. There is a degree of urgency.
Does anybody have any more questions? I'll entertain a motion to make these three county employees.
So moved.
On second, that motion then a second. Followed paper.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. So we will deal with the HR stuff in our next meeting, the line items and the salary ordinances.
Okay.
September 4th. All right, we are ready to go to budgets, and Dan is here to talk.
We'll have soil and water at 5:30, so.
Oh, we do?
Yeah. If soil and water wants to come forward, we, and if we want to get their budget up on the screen, this would be the first time that we're hearing this.
I'll add that they were not here at our regular discussion previously because there was a communication problem and they were not aware that they were gonna be here that day, so not their fault. I think it is.
Yeah, I have one.
So if we're to go forward and cover any line items that have increased from 24 to 25 proposed budget, looking at the 1,000s are exactly the same in the 2,000 account line items, there's some small increases, I'm not sure unless anyone, the total amount of increase is $390, I'm not sure there's anything there, unless, does anyone have any questions? For, for the 3,000s? We want to talk about the miscellaneous operating expense going from 9,600 to 24,500.
So that line item is, solely goes towards paying our portion of the educator salaries, so we have a full-time and a part-time educator in our office, who we, we share with WR, Virginia Sanitary, and State Union County Soil and Water. The last time that this line was increased or changed was 2017, so that amount covered our 30% portion. However, salaries have increased. So right now we are paying out of our own funds $12,320.76 this year. We will pay with soil and water's money. That puts us in a bad position for next year when we have a, we're gonna have a 319 grant and we'll need to have a watershed coordinator. If we continue on this trend, like last year was, we had a net loss of 21,000. You know, in, in three to four years, we won't have any savings, any money in our coffers, which would go towards our assisting of a watershed coordinator, something that has to, we have to have in our office. So that's why we're just asking the increase to cover that 30% salary.
Do you have anything you want to add, Max? Part of this problem that they are addressing here is when we approve for the other, or the other WR sanitation, and those entities approve to go with the part-time position, that's, they've got to pay their share of that, and that's, that's additional. And like she said, the money from the county to support the education coordinator has been falling behind, or we've not increased that for many years, so they've been digging into their own resources to make that deficit up. Soil and water have not been increasing their budget to cover this. And their budget with us, no, they have not increased that to cover that in the past. You have to do contracts signed every year, so you know, at the end of the year, yeah, you're a little behind as far as time of contract sign, at the end of the year, you're behind there, you're behind a few dollars. A lot of the money to be signed, they're not keeping.
So the mounted, the budget of 24,5, is that to make up for last year and add next year's with it or something?
No.
That's, it's gonna take that much just next year?
Just next year, yes.
So how much did the, your expense increase with the addition of the part-time position?
Honestly, it didn't increase that much, because when you take her position and divide it up, it's only 30%, it's not that large of an amount. But we also have to look at to WR, if they step out of the interlocal agreement, then our, our percentage will also increase, so that this amount still wouldn't be recovered when they step back and we take over next year as well. So, I mean, really, this amount has had been increasing, and there was, they weren't catching it, I guess, each year, so.
So that is the amount that is going to be additional, not only next year, but any future years?
As long, I mean, every time her salary increases or set, anytime there's a salary increase or interlocal agreement changes, then it could increase. But that, that amount should cover next year's amount at the projected increase.
Right, it would be 24,5 plus any thing additional that we would do in a future year.
Right. But at this point, now that I, this is my, only my second budget that I've had to do. I've only been here since November 20, so going forward, I know now to like calculate that into and know that that is something that's gonna need increased, and we'll make sure we stay on top of it, so it won't be a large increase each year.
So what about the increase for travel and lodging, that's quite a bit?
We've not had any, that's never, we've never had that line item.
I, so.
We did have, last year alone, we did, we had $3,725 in travel and lodging. That also includes registrations for the events and stuff like that. So obviously, that amount will change here and there, but we do go to annual conferences and different educational events to keep us up, to, to, to all that.
Okay, where, where is the 3,000?
I don't think we have to pay it for that.
What line item?
For travel, that comes out of soil and water money.
I think it's not.
We have our own, that comes out of our own money, it's our grant money that we, on the front page, I have the, our funding sources, so we get like 2030, we got an RMC grant, Wayne County Foundation grant, we get donations for conservation days, we're contributing to nations and funders, our profits. So those, that's incoming money for us. Also, we have a contribution agreement, the 21,642, that also goes towards anything we need in our office. But that's not, that's a, 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 a,
Okay, so that's something that I guess we'll have to revisit. We'd kind of talked about maybe having an agreement. The commissioners, do we know when that might? Not yet, working on it.
We had conversations with Union County. We don't have a complete understanding of where we're going with this WR board yet. Know exactly what, what direction they, they wanted to support.
Do you anticipate getting that resolved prior to when we have to approve the budget or hangover?
I would hope so. You know, gives us forty-five days or so. I would hope that that's enough time to work something out and let, you know, and let Soil and Water know where we're going, where we're at with that. There's quite a few balls in the air right now.
I know. Okay, is there any other questions for Soil and Water? If not, we appreciate you coming in this evening and we'll be back in contact.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let's turn to revised Health Department budget that we received here in the last week, last few days.
There's two, which one do you want to look at first?
Eleven fifty-nine and eleven sixty-one.
Let's look at fifty-nine. Looking to be the one that I sent out just this, last night or this morning. The one that was in the spreadsheet that was updated yesterday does not have this, I mean, the big spreadsheet does not include this.
Is, is this in revised?
No.
Have you got the new budget in, in the light of?
Nothing about it, you said eleven fifty-nine.
Eleven fifty-nine. Dan, did you send, have you given your revised budget to the honor?
I have not yet. I didn't finish it up until yesterday afternoon.
Eleven fifty-nine and eleven sixty-one.
The proposed budgets?
Basically, eleven fifty-nine would include all personnel?
Correct, eleven fifty-nine was all personnel and that is due to if we lose all other funding for some reason, all these positions are statutory, we have to have them to do our job, basically.
Which is, which of these, one fifty-nine?
Eleven fifty-nine has it down the left-hand side here. So the, the only proposed change is to eleven fifty-nine is the director's position was removed from the original submitted budget, so we added the director's position back to the budget. Which is line one zero three five five. And that salary is the current salary in this year's ordinance. The second change that was done was the deputy director of clinical, that job title was director of clinical services, that's been changed to deputy director. And due to that being reclassified, that dropped that particular salary down to seventy-one thousand, five hundred and forty-six. And then the last change was only a title change on one zero nine zero six, bookkeeper, which is the, the title of the position.
Dan, I have a question. I thought you were taking out one oh one two zero, secretary or assistant to the CEO. Forty-seven, seven sixteen is still in here.
Yeah. What was the line again? Sorry.
One zero, one two zero.
So I didn't physically remove it, but over in the notes section, I put not needed due to director.
See it on my copy, but it's added in in the total. So if you're gonna put zero, we want to take it out of the total.
On my copy, I don't have a total, zero total.
I mean, the total for the, for budget.
The budget should be accurate.
Eight hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and two.
Eight hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight.
This says eight seventy-seven, ninety-two. The copy I got from AJ says that. Cause I thought it was eight fourteen something, I'm like, wait a minute.
The numbers, the number submitted is eight fourteen, five ninety-eight.
But on, on what I got in the email, so my email is incorrect, sorry about that.
How about the rest of the council?
I didn't quite follow.
So the email I got from AJ, my copy shows the total budget.
His, that copy did not have these new budgets in it.
Oh, I thought the ones from AJ's.
What I sent out last night or this morning is what he's speaking from.
Okay, I brought up the one AJ had, sorry.
So that's the one?
Yeah. That's, what, what he's speaking from is the one that your board approved yesterday, correct?
Correct, eleven fifty-nine, which is the county's operating, which is the health department.
And this budget is based on things that we talked about at the last meeting and so forth, the way you want to reorganize the health department.
The next budget is, yes. This budget is, was not spoke about during the workshop.
The public health director slash CEO looks like ten three sixty-five.
Yes.
That was taken out of the budget previously, right?
Correct.
And now you're putting it back in?
It was decided that the director's position needed to be reinstated. So the chain of hierarchy would essentially be director of health department, then you have deputy director of environment, then you have deputy director of clinical services.
Okay. Dr. Ryder, do you have anything you want to add in the reorg, the way this is organized now?
Well, our, Mr. Ryder, we saw for a while, we've been doing two deputies and the health officer taking over a lot more administrative duty, it didn't work. And so we came to realize that we really needed to have a director. And in fact, it probably made it impossible for us to even recruit a new health officer. So we needed to put the director back in that position.
Okay, and all of these are being funded by grants?
Eleven fifty-nine is the county's.
This is county.
Oh, this is county and then?
Eleven sixty-one is the health first Indiana.
Sixty-one will be grants.
Correct.
And it's for everything other than personnel?
As far as supplies and other things, that's all funded by grant money or Health First Indiana.
And the three employees we just spoke about will be out.
Correct, the three future MAs will be through Health First Indiana or grant funds.
So we just have the one deputy director that was reclassified?
Correct, the deputy director.
Changed the salary.
That existed. And the, the clinical director was reclassified to deputy director.
Okay.
So the very total is?
The whole thing is eight twenty-seven?
Eight fourteen. Eight fourteen fifty-nine.
Dan, what of these positions are in existence now or which ones are not in existence now?
Back in January and February, they all existed. And then when the, the former director left, that position was removed. So we're simply just adding that back in. We're actually taking the clinical director and reclassifying it to deputy director, so we dropping that wage by ten thousand dollars. So at one point in time, they did all exist this year, back in February or so.
This year, in county, you're paying for, what did we give to the health department? Cash-wise? What's the budget?
Five hundred thousand is what we usually have in there that we give.
Out of this fund, it was eight, it was eight hundred and twenty-seven dollar per thousand last year.
That's the budget, but that's not what we, we committed, it was five hundred.
We always commit five hundred thousand every year.
So I guess the question would be if, if the county moves five hundred thousand dollars into the health fund, with the revenue that you're anticipating, will that support this budget or does there need to be more input or less input from the county?
I believe that will support this budget. As of today, I believe when I looked, we've received it in close to eight hundred thousand dollars, so I would say whatever.
Which probably includes the money from the county as, as a receipt.
Possibly, we, I gotta check the numbers, but we, you know, we take payment for everything vital records, we take payment for everything medical, everything environmental, we issue four hundred and fifty restaurant permits averaging two hundred and fifty dollars a piece, septic permits are four hundred dollars a piece, so we turn it in, but I, I can't give you a hundred percent of that answer, I don't look at that line close enough.
It, it sounds like it, then, with our five hundred thousand, I mean, typically, we give five hundred and then the revenue that you take in has to support the rest of this budget. So.
I still believe that.
Breakdown of receipts.
They had as of the twentieth, received it in, excuse me, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, six oh seven twenty-three.
Including our five hundred.
I'm sorry?
Including our five hundred.
I would assume that's in there, so then they still, and that's just through the twentieth.
And we still have a full quarter to go.
Right, yeah.
Any other questions?
So if their income continues to be good?
We could decrease.
We could leave that in the budget, but not necessarily transfer all that over till we see what they, their need is.
Remember to, to receive the funding from the state, the Health First Indiana funding, there has to be a minimum contribution. And I, do you know what that number is, Dan?
Somewhere around the three fifty to four hundred range, so the five hundred. So that's.
But it's, it's possible that we would only need to fund four hundred.
Correct.
We don't plan on losing income, I mean, our goal is to increase immunization rates and everything that we charge for, so our, our plan is definitely not to lose money, it's to increase profitability in the immunization rates.
Dr. Ryder, anything to add?
No, I trust Dan.
We, we trust Dan too. Any other questions on?
I do want to say that I appreciate in over the last two or three months, with the struggles they've gone through, Dr. Ryder, Dr. Jethro, have met with some, some of us multiple times and it's been great to have that dialogue and keep updated on what's going on over there, absolutely.
And Dan has stepped up, we appreciate that.
Let's move on to fund eleven sixty-one.
This one's a bit more complicated than one fifty-nine. Not much more. I don't know if you have the highlighted budget I submitted or if it's not highlighted.
They would have, they've all got a copy of the one you sent, or the one that was sent.
AJ?
Yes, yes, by AJ.
So on the, on the first page, on the one thousand lines, we, I went ahead and added in with the hopes the council would approve, the three MA positions. And so those are in there with the salaries of forty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars, which means the classification and the pay rate of the current MA that we employ. And then staying with the one thousand lines, fringe benefits for those employees, I've added in ten thousand, four hundred dollars for social security, fifteen thousand, lower fifteen for IRF, eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars for group health insurance. And again, that is worst case scenario, when the eighty-four thousand dollars, that's if all three of them take family coverage.
Dan, a question for you, on, on some of those top line items that do not have previous, that is because they were in the other budget previously, is that correct?
You talking about the medical assistants?
They were contracted.
That's the three that were contracted, we just had.
Never employees.
But the board member, part-time, one, overtime, was that in the?
That was in eleven fifty-nine, the, the operating budget last year.
Previous year's?
Correct.
He has not, on his spreadsheet, he didn't have the past history on there, like when AJ incorporates these two into the big spreadsheet, that will be there.
Okay.
Now, we do have history on a medical perk and a bookkeeper, but they're not over in the twenty-twenty-five requested budget. Is that a mistake, should they be over there?
Nine sixty-three and ten.
Nine sixty-three and two thirty-six.
That's because they moved to eleven fifty-nine, right?
They moved to eleven fifty-nine, oh, okay. Gotcha.
Yeah, that's why there's a previous salary, but not a current salary.
Okay.
In the two thousand lines, adjustments made, the one two two, two eight zero, those computer supplies, all of our software, our windows, laptops are starting to, to age and hold charge and things of that nature, that's the reason for eight thousand dollars. Supplies other is just that account that allows you to buy miscellaneous items that don't fit any other line. Nine thousand dollars for twenty-two, four thirty, is, this is to outfit the new employees and current employees for our outreach programs, what we would wear during fairs, community events, the fair, some of the park, things of that nature. Line two zero, two hundred, this was a food line, this was originally a lot more in that line, and that was designed to cover trainings, food, drinks, and things for any public trainings that we had to, to feed the contractors and whatever. So I reduced, I don't, I didn't believe the, the previous number was too high, in my opinion, so I reduced it down to a thousand dollars. That's, that's plenty enough to buy bottled waters, stuff for the trainings that we offer throughout the year. The contractual line of thirty-three, two hundred, it was reduced down to seven hundred and two thousand dollars to cover the medical assistance costs into one thousand lines. There's still a surplus after we meet all our contractual needs for next year. The health officer, I didn't have a line number for that, I didn't know if I created it or if thought it was given, that was a question worth. But the health officer was moved to eleven sixty-one from eleven fifty-nine and he was given a fifteen thousand dollar increase. So it went from twenty-five thousand to forty thousand dollars, so the additional fifteen thousand dollars was also moved from the contractual line to cover that. A line thirty-three, two ten, I increased that to thirty-two hundred dollars because we're right at zeroed out, that's basically going to hold this year. Certified mill has gone up substantially, as long as first-class mill, and we send out several official orders, which my statute have to go as my certified mill. Send out animals, for instance, we had a bat test positive for rabies, well, we had to send that bat to the State Department of Health, that costs a lot of money to ship that because of the timeframe, sustain the, the sample for the State Department of Health. So I increased that to thirty-two hundred dollars to cover postage, freight for next year. Petty cash, I removed that from the budget altogether, I think it was a necessary line. And travel lodging and mills, we reduce that to ten thousand dollars. I believe it was originally budgeted for fifteen thousand dollars and I don't think we've ever come close to spending that much money on training and travel and lodging. What I did was I took some of those funds that I did reduce and moved that money into line thirty-three, seven fifty, and this is contractual software support. We're going to retain the software's company for financial software for the health department, it's the same software that the highway department uses, the health board approved it as well as the commissioners, so that money was moved to this line to afford that software. And then a line thirty-three, eight ninety was reduced to fifteen thousand dollars to cover other lines as well, and that's the training. I believe that is all the changes I made to eleven sixty-one.
Can I ask a question for clarification?
Yes.
On your health officer's salary raised, is that a ten thousand or is that a thirty thousand? I don't know what.
Fifteen thousand dollar raise.
No, I'm talking, I don't know what account number to use.
It's contractual.
But you already have contractual professional of thirty-three, two hundred above it.
So that's my mistake, I didn't know where to put him. Right, right now, he's being paid out of contractual in eleven fifty-nine. Right. Right now, he's being paid out of contractual in 1159. So, I didn't know if he needed a line item, or if we just put him on a contractual. If that's the case, we move that $40,000 back to the contractual line.
So, that's kind of what I'm asking. Is he supposed to have a, be on the salary?
It should be contractual, contractual, what you think. You or she?
Either one. For clarity, it could have its own line item. But it also could be paid out of the contractual line, whichever you prefer.
I prefer it to be separate, myself. You can...
I think it's quite more clear.
So, I need to create a line item then?
Yes. And if you want to create that line item and put it in, I mean, when we approve it, we don't have to do that separate. Item separately, but you can...
You can separate that here.
I would assume the line item would need to be created for all three medical assistance positions as well, right?
We're going to have the next meeting.
Okay. Any other questions, Dan or Dr. Ryder? Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, we're going to bounce around a little bit and cover some things that were questions in the second go-around. And the general fund, let's go to the clerks' budget. And in that budget, we need to create a line item, 13610. And it was $11,000 that she was requesting. So, all we're doing on this one is adding that line item. We don't have to create the line item. And vote on it. We just need to put it in that budget. If you want to go to the sheriff's budget. And... We need to look at retirement.
What account number?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I can tell you, somebody sees it.
13660.
Right there?
13660.
Okay.
The... We do it at maximum, correct? Minus the 49.
Recommended.
Recommended. That's what I...
Typically, I've done is recommended.
Recommended, recommended one. I don't have that number, but was it like 592,000? Anybody have that?
It's in the range, but I don't have the exact number in my head. I'm sorry.
Did Randy send that to all of us?
It's 49,000 would make it five. That would kind of make sense. I think that number ought to be around 542,000.
I think I know the sheriff's note was the 49,000. He was approximately 49,000 for 2025.
When he came in, though, he told us what the maximum, and he told us what was recommended. And I'm not sure. Well, let me see if I...
Oh, here we go.
So, what do you want?
What we frequently have done is taken the recommended number and then subtract...
The 49,000 that are from...
The expected revenues from the civil process. From civil process fees, right?
And 49,000 is about what we were projecting that we would get next year. So, it's a matter of...
Maybe they didn't tell us what they're...
When he came in, he did tell us.
Yeah.
I've seen the letter. I just don't, from the credit card.
For some reason, I was thinking of this 592,000. Yeesh.
I've seen it. I just, I think that's...
I mean, I think we're in the ballpark, by, you know? So, I think if we change that 619, 619,000 number to 542, 542,000, I think we're going to be in the ballpark.
That's close.
We can adjust it.
We have to, yeah.
Get you the copy of the letter that has the suggested cost in there.
So, that's actually a little...
We did 536 last year. Eight, 536, eight, 78, so that's not too much.
Okay, we're all right with that. Kathy, is that in the prosecutor's budget?
So, one, one part of the victim's assistant coordinator grant. One part is in the prosecutor's general fund, line 10929, and the other part is in grant 1209.
Okay. Do you have, do you have those figures?
I do. So, if you go...
So, if we go to the victim's assistance grant...
Go to the prosecutor, because it's in the general fund first, since it's already there. 009, and then it's line 10929.
See, the 10929?
Yes.
10929.
So, this year...
What's in there right now is 33,223. And you're going to say we need to change that to...
So, we need to make it 29,16416. 21? I'm sorry, 20... 29,16416. I cannot put cents. Okay, 17 then. Oh, I'm sorry, 1641, make it 165. That would be the general fund's portion of that, because she gets more for the next, or 1209. And then, if you go to the other funds, I assume...
Victim's assistance grant?
Yes, what? 1209. It's in that fund, not county, general. Yeah, I don't do 1209. Okay, I guess 1209's not on here, but in that one, it should be 28,7321 is what she's getting for the grant. What happens is, we get X amount for the grant, and the county has to make the difference. And it's usually a two-year grant, so we figure it that way. And I got these numbers working with payroll and so forth, and the grant coordinator. I just wanted Mike Shipman to say, okay, put those in. I haven't heard from him yet, but he may be tied up. So, we want to put those place markers in there, because that way it's working.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Any, any questions on that? If not, um... We have already heard from Public Health and Soil and Water. Next up is the Plan Commission, taking a look at it for the second time. Okay, looking at the... 14.
I don't think anything changed, do it? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, something did.
Legal notices, fabricance. No, that's the same. For some reason, that director's salary was never there.
So...
Oh, that's the one they want to add. They just didn't highlight it. Checky little thing, aren't you? They're adding that.
Okay, now, I see there's up to the top.
That's the, yeah. That's the changes that they want to make to...
So, we've got a note to move that department head to Commissioners.
So, do we need, we need to move that department head to the Commissioners' budget, or was it already?
Well, what we did is, is move your salary to the Commissioners' budget. And then, we requested a new position.
A new position. But they're both still in this budget, in the requested line, so it's added to the total.
So, is that double in here, twice in the...
So, we need to take that department head out of this Plan and Commission budget? Because it's still in there.
No. Well, yeah, that's...
It says move to Commissioners.
Correct. That should be...
So, that one should go away?
Move to the Commissioners, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Did you originally include that in the budget, or is that something that you did after, then we haven't?
I thought we originally...
Originally did it, okay. So, that 100...
But we've talked about it.
282...
We go to the Commissioners' budget.
Would need to be zero.
It is. It is in the Commissioners' budget as well, so it can be deleted from this budget.
It's not zero?
Over there, she's on the adopted budget?
Yeah, adopted's where I'm changing.
Oh, okay.
Okay, okay, so we're good.
Okay.
All right.
And then, the new position is the, is the, uh...
The director.
Calling it the director, oh, and that's for... I think it's...
Correct. And the building.
Oh, and the playgrounds? Or filming, just filming.
Okay, that's, that's called, those two are the only changes in that budget. So, for the time being, um... I think we can move on, and next is fairgrounds. Overall, fairgrounds has a little less than us... Hang on here until we stop moving. Okay. 37611.
Looks like they've added about $7,000 altogether.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say to begin with. They've added $7,000. And that was...
Everybody's adding travel and lodging. It's just kind of expensive.
So, the sales and marketing coordinator, why is that more?
No, oh, I don't know. Oh, they added in a...
Equipment maintenance and repair went up 2,000.
They raised the salary of the sales and marketing coordinator, too.
Line 10906.
Yeah. Because it was... 47, 840, and now they have it at 52.
Steve, why is that increase in there?
Which one?
The sales and marketing coordinator.
Is that to keep it an exempt position? So, that's the, that's the new minimum, starting in January, for an exempt position.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's not the 586...
58 something.
It's 52.
So, that's, I think that number's wrong.
58,656 is the new January 1st salary.
So, is that what that should be then?
Yes. I didn't, I didn't put anything in salary, so whatever's up there is what was from last year.
If she is exempt, correct, then that's the new salary.
So, we didn't request...
I didn't request anything in salaries.
I actually forgot about that decision.
Well, they've put additional in there.
I didn't. Well, it's getting ready to go up again, right here.
Yeah.
And I don't know, you know, with, with people not putting in increases for their positions, are we aware of any others that are exempt that are going to have to go up?
I don't know if they made it to the budget, but the asset director and educator at Solomond.
There's two of them.
So, now there's three total. Was that in Solomond's budget?
No, I don't think so. Didn't look at the time.
Of course, there's only, it's only in third, so it's...
Probably not, because I thought we were keeping salaries the same until we decided and we would finalize it, so we would add those in for the salary ordinance.
Kim, what's that new number for the minimum?
New number, January 1st, would be 58,656.
Is it, is it a possibility of that person being out of the...
I think so.
Who are you talking about now?
Yeah.
Who are you talking about? About Haley. Marketing director.
Haley is not, she's not exempt.
Oh, I had asked, and I thought you said exempt.
Misunderstood.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I thought, I missed her. So, we are not changing that. We have two exempt employees in the county that salaries will need to be adjusted, January 1st, and this is not one of them. She's not exempt. Sorry.
So, it should, it should be the same number that she's being paid now, 47,000. That's what I had in there, 52,000, so.
52, 541. Should go to 47, 840.
That's right.
No?
Her current salary?
Is it 52 something?
That's 52 something. That's what I thought when we had...
Were we talking about 10906, that line number?
Yes.
Sales and marketing coordinator? Her current salary is 52,540.80.
Yeah. I don't know why, last year, we have it as 47.
Well, that...
She start last year?
She started during the year.
So, we didn't, we didn't have to fund the full amount.
So, then, the 52,591...
Is correct.
She is not exempt.
Correct.
Okay.
Then this is 2,540, right?
One, like, going here.
Um...
She was exempt.
You... And there was equipment, maintenance, and repair increased $2,000.
Which line you on?
Bottom line.
33620.
They spent $7,187 through the first six months.
I think this was probably through the first five months, when we did the budgets, that we were...
But this spreadsheet was updated.
Oh, it's been updated?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two days ago.
So, through, are you saying through August 19?
Two days ago, whatever.
So, are you aware... So are you aware of anything that would be an additional two thousand, or are we safe, that going for ten thousand?
So if there's an increase in my budgets, then it takes my budgets, I go back twenty-four months and get a trend. And it's, that's, that's same way with utilities, I think there's an increase in that one.
In twenty twenty-three, he only spent a total of just under ten, eight thousand dollars for that.
Necessary.
Based on the past history, his number is probably.
Based on this world today and how much everything costs.
Yeah, I may do a little different than other ones. I, I try to make mine last, and so, you know, I, I try to, to monitor it each month. And.
It's only two thousand dollars.
Certainly, there's gonna be sometimes that you have a larger maintenance bill, but.
Okay, any other questions on this budget?
I do have a question that, it's nothing to do with the money end of this, but line item three, 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 five, one says jurors, travel, lodging, meals. Why would that be in the fairgrounds?
I don't know. It has zero money in it, but that's weird, not looking like that's there. And they have a travel, lodging, and meals.
It says jurors.
Yeah, and I believe Debbie's law has shown it that way, and that's, I thought, well, that's strange. So we should check into, clean that up. I don't know why it would say jurors on that line in this budget, but.
It shouldn't.
It shouldn't be in there.
There's no expenditure. It's just the heading is company, whatever's up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that just needs to come out.
Somewhere along the line. Along the line, but not, I don't know, years past.
So we're looking at that thirty-three, three fifty-one, if my glasses are reading it right, that line shouldn't be in there at all.
I can't take it out. My guess is years ago, they might have had it in there as a mistake. There doesn't show any activity, but I'm not allowed to remove anything.
In, in the description, account description, but not used instead of jurors?
No, no. Your, that description goes with that particular account number. They are assigned this budget.
You can't take that line out.
So they put it in this budget by mistake.
But you can add line items with.
You can add line items, but you can't, can't.
That's crazy. I know it's not your fault, but.
They already have travel, lodging, and meals, two lines up anyway, I mean, that says zero, so it's, it's no big deal.
And they haven't spent any this year? Prior years, have they? Fifteen hundred line item, can you, can you, um, span to the right?
It used to be, it used to be six hundred dollars and they didn't spend it, now it's fifteen hundred.
Doesn't look like they've spent anything since twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-three, calls the marketing director. I don't let him go twice.
I was gonna say, they, they've never spent it, it's just been in there as six hundred, and then all of a sudden it's fifteen, and. They haven't spent that either.
Kept some in there. Obviously, we have a new position that may, may use that. In years past, there really wasn't any need for, you know, workers out there to go to, to travel. But I think there's probably a possibility that that could occur now with this new position, but it hasn't occurred yet.
We discussed that travel business when, before that position was put in. One of the responsibilities could be to go make a presentation, somewhere to come.
For a conference or a.
Yeah. There's probably some conferences she could even go to and have a booth or something.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go on to the building department.
Tony, um, just for your point of reference back in the sheriff's budget, retirement contribution amount that's in there now, six nineteen, eight thirty-four. Sheriff just forwarded me that one. That was the recommended. Six nineteen.
It jumped up that much? Is that less than forty-nine?
Forty-nine?
It's not less than forty-nine, I know that.
Well, no, that's the starting.
So what was the maximum on that letter?
Six seventy-four.
Seventy-five, seventy-eight, thirty-four.
Exactly what it is. That or a bake sale. I'll have Susan call you.
Okay, before we go to the building department, let's go back to the sheriff and the retirement.
What's in there now?
Six nineteen, thirty-four.
Oh, it's eight thirty.
Should be about five sixty.
This makes it.
Five sixty, yes, five sixty, five seventy.
Okay, five seventy, eight thirty-four. That's what that should be. Okay, thank you. Kinda.
Kinda.
Silly, be tired.
You know me.
Thanks a lot.
All right, now to the building. Buildings and grounds.
Commission or building on the grounds?
It says building department. Is this supposed to be building commission on the agenda?
Legal name is building, Department of Building, so it is the building commission.
Thank you. There's no changes in there? Uh, something down in the two thousands, four thousand. It went from ninety-six hundred to ten thousand one hundred.
Was it fuel?
Fuel went up five hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
It was fuel.
Just fuel.
Is that anticipated cost raise or additional travel?
Well. It's picked up, so inspections picked up, and remember, we also, um, weights and measures travel out of that as well. Weights and measures, fuel is also being provided.
Okay, let's go to building grounds.
He collapsed, I don't know why.
Okay, the one thousands. Here, we're adding a maintenance supervisor.
We're, we're recommending as part of our transition.
Department head.
Become a department head.
Okay. That's the only change in the one thousands. We go to the two thousands. We have cleaning and janitorial going up two thousand. And field equipment supplies going down fifty-three dollars, unless that's an error. Cleaning and janitorials contract.
It's, it's just the same as the last time, thirteen thousand. That was what they've spent this year.
There says thirteen thousand, oh, fifty-three, adopted budget.
What they spent so far was ten.
There, hundred and twenty-two. Okay, up there, it says thirteen oh fifty-three, so that's.
Yeah.
So that's contractual going up.
Correct, we pay, we pay the, the cleaning for this building comes out of contractual, and then we have contractual person. Contractual for the jail is also right out.
Yeah, the. I lost track up there.
What are we looking at now? Contractual professional. And utilities went up. That's all.
Contractual went up five thousand.
Utilities. And contractual.
Okay, I, I don't see anything unless anyone else sees anything. And next would be commissioners. Yes. I didn't say anything. You were just smiling over there and it made me laugh. Commissioners budget.
They're trying to get some money out of us, so we're gonna have to. They have the department head moved up there.
Zero candy bars.
If, um, if you recall, I'm sorry, I didn't anticipate, uh, this, but. We talked, the, the last meeting you had about, um, the issues with insurance going up. And I'm not sure whether that's got included. I don't think it's included in this budget. We've got the immediate issue of what's still due in twenty twenty-four. But we need to take care of an increase for twenty twenty-five, I believe.
We'll get to that. The Swift M D went up five grand. Was that just built in contractually?
It's, it's what they're charging us to continue.
We start the, all the part-time people on that partway through the year also.
Correct.
Yeah. Guarantee that still saves a ton of money.
Workers' comp.
It saves a lot. We'll get you the, the numbers, uh, the anticipated numbers for, uh, for next year for the insurance that went up. But remember that part of the issue for the second half of this year is that we, we did not build in the increase for the second half of the year. So how you want us to calculate, uh, that increase, you know, it's gonna just be a guesstimate. Hopefully, it won't go up as much as it has, uh, this year, but we have no way of knowing that. So we can build in a, a ten or twenty percent increase for the second half of the year, um, along with that number, if you, if you'd like us to. With you on that, Tony.
Okay. Um, if we can raise the screen up?
I have a question. Why are there two different workers' comp lines?
There is a, an insurance line, a premium line, and then there is the deductible.
Okay.
So we pay, we pay a certain amount, and then the, the workers' comp insurance takes over from there.
Yes. Somebody have a question?
I just said bless you, sorry. Sorry.
Okay, the animal shelter. The. Will that go for part of that?
Thirty-three, five ninety.
Joint.
Remember, we're, we're looking at, uh, possible improvements to the animal welfare system. We currently are spending fifty thousand dollars a year, or at least that's what we have budgeted. It's on a per animal basis now to house those animals, uh, with the help shelter. And so to account for changes to our program, if we want to do, um, some spay and neutering clinics or those kind of things. We're asking for, uh, a fifty thousand dollar increase to that line item, moving from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand.
We've only spent eighteen thousand so far this year.
And again, this is our first year with help. We're paying on a per placed animal basis.
Yeah.
We went from a situation at the end of last year where we had no place to take animals at all. And so as we've eased into this program with help, uh, the farther we get into the year, the more animals that have been placed. I'm, I'm hoping and expect that we'll come in under the fifty thousand, but I can't give you a, a good guesstimate at this point about where we'll end up. We think we'll be, the fifty thousand will be adequate, again, for animal placement. And the other fifty thousand, if it's approved, would be to programming.
To what?
Programming, it would go to programming for spay and neuter clinics, for other programs that are gonna come out of the recommendations from our contract with, uh, Dr. Stacy Kostiak. I, I always mispronounce her name.
Dr. Stacy.
Stacy, we call her for ease of, uh, pronunciation. So we're, we're, uh, almost to the point where the county and the city, out of the help funding, will engage, uh, Dr. Stacy for a four-month contract, uh, working with all the animal shelters, all of the, uh, the for-profit groups that are involved in, in animal care as well. And she will make recommendations, uh, and, and that money would go into, um, implementation of some of those recommendations.
Are you talking about spay and neutering these animals with this money, or?
Potentially, yes.
Well, always my understanding was when you adopted, when you paid that fee.
And that's keeping people from adopting. It's at least a hundred and fifty dollars to adopt, uh, county.
But it's also, it's also one of the reasons, you know, every animal that's, that exists in Wayne County doesn't necessarily get adopted from a shelter. You know, it's from the stray cat that comes by my house and has a litter of kittens in my backyard. That's how we got our cat. And so, um, we also have a mother spay. Some people don't have that ability, they, they, they pick up a stray, but they can't afford to get it spayed. So some low-cost spay and neutering opportunities might be one of the recommendations that comes out of Dr. Stacy's, uh, contract with us. We don't know what, uh, what she will be recommending to us, but that money would, would be available to, uh, to pay for some of those recommendations being, um, carried out.
Increase the spending now for long-term population control.
Just move to seventy-five thousand instead of.
Well, you are the fiscal body.
I know.
Decide that number.
I'm just asking you.
You want, but that is, that's the logic behind our request.
When do you expect to get the recommendations for this?
We, we hope that her contract will begin September one, end of December. She'll be giving us monthly reports on, uh, what she's finding and, um. we'll share those with, with you as we get them.
Well, it's unfortunate, there's a lot of people probably would not have them spayed or neutered anyway, even if it was free.
Um, yeah, that's true.
Some wouldn't, but I think some would.
Right, I'm just saying, not everybody's gonna instantly come in because it's free.
You know, I'm, I remember when, when Kenny used to say at the start and the end of every meeting, you know, wash your hands, maintain social distance, all that. Bob Barker used to say, you need to just get your pets spayed or neutered.
But state law now does require you, if you're going to adopt from a shelter, it has to be spayed or neutered. New law.
New law twenty twenty-four.
That's three.
So it's in place now, I think.
So there's a lot in motion to really get out ahead of the problem so it just doesn't continue to.
That money could go to the shelters to actually have things done, could go to, um, spay, neuter clinics. There's a group that, that would set up at the fairgrounds that do low-cost, um, spay and neutering, in, in our buildings. So there, there are various opportunities to, uh, to impact things.
And I think too, the problem is to curb the feral cat population.
Absolutely.
Proven over time, if you go out and do these spay and neuters and release them back, it eventually eliminates the feral cat population, but you have to, because they reproduce a.
So they bring them in and they actually turn them back out where they found them?
Yeah.
That's the recommendation from Dr. Pizano.
Because there's not gonna be more of them.
Cats are pretty, they survive pretty well, I think. According to Dr. Pizano, I didn't realize, it seems that a cat has like four owners.
It goes to this house, it gets fed, and it travels like two miles in. In nine lives. We only have taken care of the first life. I think for the, uh, the problems have been, have been identified over a number of years. That's a, a pretty good investment base against what was expected of us to do.
Public has an outcry, they, they have definitely spoke that they want something done, we're trying to move that needle. And it costs money, of course.
And a number of counties have utilized ARPA money to greatly improve their animal welfare condition. Some have built elaborate shelters. We don't think we need to invest a lot as a shelter, but we do have to address this problem. Especially now, yesterday's, uh, health board meeting announced that, uh, rabies has been found in a wildlife, a bat. At a, uh, Richmond school. And, uh, certainly stray cats, feral cats, uh, any county that has, that interact with human beings and you have rabies, um, in a county, it's pretty serious because animal welfare definitely impacts human public safety and public health.
Best at seventy thousand, I'm not sure we need to double the line item until we get more information.
It was at fifty, I mean, we could go to seventy-seven.
I think, I think anything helps, probably do not agree with that, Jeff, it's, we're trying to move.
Obviously, you're the fiscal body, you're gonna tell us what that number is.
And maybe in four months, Dr. Stacy will have some things in place with this and say, okay, this is what it's gonna cost. I, I would be comfortable taking it to seventy thousand, what, what's the opinion?
I would agree, I think this is something that later in this budget process, when we see where we're at on the amount of money we got available, this is something that could be adjusted either way. So I, we could leave that at seventy for now and know that.
Let's change it to seventy.
Yeah.
Did you say seventy-five? That's right, that's right. You said seventy-five.
I heard seventy-five, what are you talking about?
He said seventy, so I'm gonna go with Tony's.
Yeah, there's a lot of increases in this budget.
It's true.
And with that thought though, you could leave it at a hundred and know that it's an area you can come, when we come back, because tonight's not the final light of discussion.
There you go.
My thoughts on that is what Mary Ann said, if the law says we have them in a shelter, we have to do this. And my assumption is we're not.
We don't have to, that's the service that we can help people.
I thought she said the.
The law says you cannot adopt. You cannot adopt an animal until, I mean, it's, the neutering of an animal is a requirement for a shelter to place it.
It's not a requirement that we do that.
But, but people are not adopting because it's at least a hundred and fifty dollars. So if we had some veterinary assistance, there's a, veterinary, uh, solution is a great part to our animal problem. And we haven't spent a dime on veterinary services as a part of the animal welfare issue. And we need to get engaged with the veterinary community in order to get out of this, uh, problem. And you know, the number one problem, when we went to the people of Wayne County, came back to animal crisis. So the people have really called for us to intervene in this, uh, well, we spoke out about animals than any other issue. They were forced to ignore that, I think would be very short.
Do we need a motion or you wanna?
No, I mean, it's, it's, I, I throw it out there, if I, if I see more people say yes, I, you know.
I'm not saying yes.
Yes.
On seventy, what you said.
On seventy. Well, what, will one of the three of you go with seventy?
Seventy.
Okay.
They've only spent eighteen thousand.
We can change it later, but change that line item to seventy. Okay, council, what are our other? News and subscriptions was a minor. Historical society. You're asking for another forty-five hundred?
No, it was the same, it's the same. It's burial of soldiers and sailors, but up six thousand dollars, we've only spent six thousand this year.
Eighteen, twelve. Okay, wrong line item, it was burial of, uh, soldiers and sailors.
It was eighteen, but then twenty twenty-four was twelve thousand. So we've only spent sixty-six hundred. Can we go back to twelve?
We asked for an increase, so I don't know.
Needs to go back to twelve thousand then.
Twenty-three, eight seventy?
Thirty-three, eight seventy.
Thirty-three, eight seventy, thank you.
Twenty-three?
Got back to twelve, Tony.
Yes, it is twelve there. We, we've already reduced that. Because adopted is what she's going by.
Okay. Even though it's not actually adopted.
Still says eighteen.
Yeah. Which came for a while.
Miscellaneous contingency was zero and they're asking for twenty-five.
Just kidding.
I think, I think it's appropriate to give them a chance to appropriately use a contingency fund and see how it goes. From one that worked in this for sixteen years, a contingency fund was very helpful.
Especially if you have an oil leak.
Give it to the person who took it away in the first place.
Now, that's a good point, because he did not want it anyhow.
I do.
Okay. Brad said he's. It's, I, I don't.
It's not.
It used to be a hundred thousand, you cut that off.
That was a lot more than.
You're not, something that we reduced, you're not gonna simply spend it on that, are you?
It was either two or seven.
Hey, it's, it's a contingency fund.
I mean, we, we, we meet every two weeks, I'm, I'm not sure there's, and I quote, unquote from Jeff Plaster from three years ago and, and before, we meet every two weeks and really there isn't something that has, something can't go through the auditor's office in two weeks.
Intend to spend it on things that you not want us to.
In the past, when we had that, there was a lot of communication with the council before money was spent out of that. But it was the fact, the flexibility, being able to negotiate some things and make progress is what we used it for.
But I think we have a better relationship with council and commissioners and.
Keep the lines of communication open.
On a regular basis, don't we?
Yes, we do.
We give millions of dollars to our department heads, I think we give twenty-five thousand dollars to commissioners.
To the commissioners, you think, okay.
But you will tell us before you spend that. Because it takes at least two weeks to go through the auditor's office anyway, so.
What, we will communicate.
But we all have master cards.
I don't.
You don't have a master card?
I don't.
You don't have master cards? Nobody should miss.
Didn't know you carried enough cash to buy gas and more, without credit cards.
No, I mean, I don't have a.
County card, oh.
Commissioners and council shouldn't have a county card.
I do, never used it.
We go to conferences and stuff. So I thought the ambulance service was still the same until next year.
It's, um, a small increase that reflects the, the increase.
Is that what?
Oh, did we have a percentage each year? Okay.
So this is, what's, that's the actual number.
Watch out next year, you have no idea what's gonna happen.
Contract, I was locked in.
Okay, and then it gets renegotiated in twenty-five, right?
This is the state, I can't even get a half an ambulance for that.
I think it's, I think it, I think this is the third year.
Oh, is that all?
Is there any other lines below? That's it, okay.
I just have a question on the care of inmates and patients, what, what is that exactly?
Those are, um, patients in the state hospitals, state hospital system from Wayne County. And sometimes they'll need clothing or, you know, a toothbrush or, and so the county pays for that.
I just thought, well, why is that here and not in the sheriffs or whatever?
No, it's not, it's not prisoners in the sheriffs. In the jail.
What's the miscellaneous?
A lot more than two thousand there.
What's the miscellaneous equivalent for WCTV?
Um, we are requesting, Brad, can you help me with what the thing is called? There's a, a control device in their studio, Tristar. It costs thirty-five thousand dollars, needs to be replaced. We're suggesting a one-time additional, uh, gift to them to, to buy that equipment. So it's not an ongoing, uh, expense to, to, uh, fund their operations as for a piece of equipment.
So, I can take it out your twenty-five thousand dollar contingency. Well.
You already spent our money, you just gave us.
Can you give us, uh, sixty thousand in contingency and then we'll just pay for it out of contingency?
Can we add that to our one-time list or?
Sure.
Because you have it in your, it's, it's adding up in your budget right now, like it's a yearly thing.
Has it already been moved?
Said that last time. Did we? That's where it's zeroed out on the adopted budget.
There you go, you're looking at the wrong.
And we're going to decide whether we're gonna fund it. So I believe.
We put it on our.
You have it on your one-time list.
It's on the one-time list, I think.
And you know that was. We haven't put much on it.
We haven't, I don't know if we've put anything on.
Stand by.
Stand by. How about radio towers?
You had mentioned ACHIVA, is that on here?
Um, ACHIVA is in your budget, it's in the council budget. Sixteen thousand dollars, I assume it's still in there.
So the twenty-five that we're talking about is in the miscellaneous contingency? Or, I'm sorry.
It's line, it's line forty-four, forty-nine.
Highlight it there so we can see what line, okay, there we go, thank you.
Yeah, WCTV has really been hurt badly by the reduction in franchise fees out of Richmond. Then it always proffered them up so much, but as fewer and fewer people actually pay for cable, there's so many other ways to get programming, um, that we feel that this one-time expenditure will really help them with their, um, ways to make other revenue. For one thing, they have to be creating and replacing their revenue with other, um, means of support. Because there's just so much competition now for entertainment access.
That probably says it's reaching fewer people. If you use some other type of streaming.
What they're doing is reaching more people through other methodologies.
WCTV is.
If you go to their site on the internet, that's what you're saying.
Correct.
And that costs, too. That takes more equipment, more time and, you know, if they did not have practice innovation, they would be fading away. If they don't innovate, they would not have that educational component in our community.
What kind of a yearly budget do they have that they operate on?
Mary Ann's on the, on the board, so.
Just at a board meeting.
Just around.
Around two hundred and seventy-five, three hundred thousand, I think. We get some in-kind from IU East, but really no cash contributions. They're on their own to raise their own money and Richmond's franchise fees are, are the number one source of income. County contribution is a small fraction.
It has our, our franchise fees, a small fraction of our. So it, it used to be the franchise fee contribution was four hundred thousand dollars a year. It was, it was big, uh, but I, I don't know what it's, what it is now, I, I was on the board for twenty years. It was, it was a significant number.
Okay, for now, let's go to EMA. And then we'll go to the nine-one-one. Budget after that. So here it's an increase in overtime. Trying to think of the correlation there. Correlation.
Why they're increasing overtime?
Usually it's when they're not fully staffed and they have.
But then you can transfer.
Exactly.
I know.
Out of, out of vacancies, but.
Staffed, I can't imagine why they're having that much overtime.
Have they been fully staffed most of the year?
Yes.
I think so.
If they're fully, I, I mean, I could see if they weren't fully staffed, that people would have to work overtime, but we should be able to transfer out of those line items.
Did he have an explanation?
Part of it, part of it was not being staffed, but then part of that overtime goes for EMA. And they're, they're working with the weather alerts and things. And they're working with the weather alerts and things they've had. Barry, when you say the weather alert...
Well, when EMA's activated.
If there's a tornado or something, they can be out all night.
They'll shoot the eclipse.
And our two of them, two of them are out.
Badness to command up during the eclipse.
Two of them are being on, isn't it?
We've had an inordinate number of chemical spills on the interstate. That's one of those departments you could cut it. Got it. But we gotta staff it, so if we have to transfer money.
Says he's gonna run out this year. His budget didn't give an explanation.
I think I would personally rather leave it, and then if we need to come back and have something, do that then.
Yeah, I think probably what we wanna do a second go-round is cut where we can now. Instead of... Otherwise, you're gonna leave stuff and continue to... Come back and come back and come back. So, I would like as many of the line items that you think we should change, that we go ahead and take care of it now. Because we haven't talked about compensation, and that's gonna come up in a big way here. So, would we be okay in changing that to... Just changing it to 28.5, the overtime line item?
He spent 46 in '23.
I remember at one point he was very understaffed and it took a lot of overtime, but...
But we had...
Like I said, you could cut it.
Yeah.
And we have to transfer later in the year or...
Yeah. Let's change that to 28.5. We have contractual professional going from $23,000 to $84,400. What's that say? $60,000 for new radio?
You could probably reduce that based on the timeframe that I gave you earlier. We had him put money in for tower lease, this radio project, but we're not gonna be deployed until third quarter. These estimates, I believe, are one if you had to pay that lease for the year each month. So, cut it now.
So, he was at 23. We probably got that back to...
Well, it says that $60,000 for the new radio lease, so we got that to 30. Add it to what he had for this year. Got it back to 55.
Well, it looks like they've spent $15,000 this year in contractual, so they do spend it for some other stuff too. Not just having that lease.
Part of that, though, was for additional projects in his contractual professional.
That's where he pays for the...
It sounds like that number can be reduced. Wouldn't we wanna reduce it too?
So, when the towers are up, what do you anticipate our yearly lease would be on the two? I won't know until we know what the load on each tower is and how much the lease is offset by other tenants on the tower or what the offset will be for the tower at County Highway and swap for land lease.
So, that $15,622 represents how many towers?
That's what they spent this year.
Zero.
That's what they've spent this year.
That's other contractual professional stuff they've spent.
Tower lease is under the new project.
He estimated $60,000 for leasing two towers for the year. So, if you cut that in half, that would do.
Yeah.
And you take off $30,000.
If we go to 55, I think we'll be fine.
55, I think we'll be fine. If we have to do something later, we'll do it. I'd go to 55.
What's a reasonable tower lease? Are we reasonable here?
We won't know, yes, because he based that $60,000 off a good faith estimate, but we won't know until we know how many antennas are hanging on each tower to know what the load rate is, because that's how they calculate the rent or the lease payment.
So, everybody on that tower pays the same amount?
No. Government would pay less than private sector. We're gonna pay less than what an AT&amp;T or Verizon or Sprint would pay.
55 should be.
I think 55 is a good... I mean, we're gonna give it to them if they need it, but...
Give us that from $84,000 to $55,000?
I texted Matthew, and he said about his overtime, he had three people off on FMLA for the first four months of the year. And then he has one on intermittent FMLA now and one going out again in December with a need replacement. So, he's got...
But if they're out on FMLA, they can transfer those ones.
Now, salary...
That's what we've always done before.
It's paid.
It's paid FMLA? Okay, that's why. So, they're paying other people to fill in. So, that's why he's running out of overtime money.
And don't lose sight of the fact that the city of Richmond paid you back to the tune of $400,000 a year into the general fund towards this budget.
So, maybe his overtime does need to be...
But we don't know how many people are gonna be off next year anyway. I mean, it's a crapshoot. 28... 28.5.
Just come ask for it.
If it's more, then we can transfer.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Fund it.
That's just his reasons.
I think we're good on this budget if we can go to 911. 911.
It's in the non-general fund.
Oh.
That's all.
I'm not sure there's much.
These distributions from the state.
Kim, who was the other employee name, the department or the title that we needed to change besides CASA and wanna make sure we do that?
The salaries you made for the excess status, CASA and... Shoot, what did I say? CASA and educator, soil and water.
Oh, okay. Just wanna make sure we do that before we get done.
Okay, if we can go to 911?
I'm technically on it, but it says EMA there. I meant 12.
It's in the non-general fund labeled Wayne County 911.
It's in the Wayne County 11222, right? Why did it not change?
These are non-general fund dollars.
There. Why it's not going?
It says it at the top. It's just not showing on the bottom.
Let me... I don't know why it's not going. Let me go out of it and get back here.
What do you need to know?
I'm not sure.
These are all employees. Well, there's retirement, I don't know that stuff.
What time is it?
There we got it. Cat and dog.
I said indoor.
No, outdoor. So, if we reduce the animal problem, we could...
So, you're fine.
It's unbelievable.
Okay, so, $1,000, nothing. Contractual professional, he's got a reason there for the increase. Does that say new recorder?
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, isn't that... Is that the thing we're buying out of ARPA money?
Well, that's for the...
That's for... He's had two.
Contractual professional services of new in space and evaluations.
He's got the recorder in there, though, and I think we already told him that. We're going to pay for that this year.
He's not doing the recorder this year, remember, because his maintenance contract...
It's the software he's getting this year. Okay. So, the $175,000 software on yours, is it taken out?
No.
No, we need to take that out, because we're doing that this year out of ARPA money.
This is non-general fund money, and that's what 1222 is designed for, is for 911-related equipment. So, that coal handling equipment in there at $175,000, leave in there, pay for it out of the dedicated fund and do not move it back into even our one-time and general fund. There's plenty of money at 1222 to pay for that. So, leave it there where it's at.
Okay. So, there's annual funds for this whole budget. Extension office is next. Okay, there we go. County extension. Nothing in the $1,000 as far as increases. Nothing in the $2,000s.
Yeah, look. Excuse me.
And a little bit of an increase in the $3,000s. And that is in contractual professional. Has an increase of almost $4,000. Anyone know what this is?
I think that's in their agreement with...
Oh, yeah.
Slight increase of $505 in a lease and repair. And... That is it. Quote, lease and repair is the same.
It's the same. You're not looking far enough over on her.
Okay.
24, yeah. It's the same.
It's the same.
Even though he's already spent.
$3,000.
Yeah, but it depends on what that is. I mean, that may be fine. Can we go to the auditor's budget? Nothing in the $1,000s. There is an increase of 12.5 in the $2,000s. And that is for reference books of about $1,400 and printed office supplies, about $1,200. In the $3,000s. We have the contractual professional was zero and went to $20,000. Was that legal fees part? Or what was that?
For an attorney? Yeah, well, if I use it, yes.
I think if there ever was a circumstance, we could probably talk about it then, but... Yeah, beforehand, but I would suggest we reduce that to... Back to zero.
I recommend you take it to zero. Take my request out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Travel. You talked about taking. Your folks need to go to more training. And the training went up $500, so I don't think there's anything else there unless anyone sees anything.
We do need to have it in there.
Kim, employee that's gonna be reclassified, shouldn't we adjust this for that?
Well, I think whenever you're ready to... I thought, whenever you're ready to adjust all the salaries, because that was gonna be placed on the September agenda.
Yeah, but that's...
But it still needs to go in next year's budget.
Yeah. That's what we're talking about next month would be if we do that yet this year, right?
And to vote on it.
For sure, it would start in January.
Wouldn't you pick that up when you do the calculations?
But it's gonna be in there, whether we put it in now or...
Maybe we could put a note next to it.
Which one of those positions is that?
Which employee line item?
Oh, the one... Yeah, the one that came back. 10-9-39. 10-9-39. Since this one here, the deduction.
So, it will be raised. But you're wanting to do that when we do that?
Well, at your pleasure, but... I mean, there's a list of other ones that... Different things.
In other offices?
In other offices. For discussion or... So, it's up to you.
The two employees that we talked about that are non-exempt, do we need to...
They're exempt. I have them on my list.
They're on your list as well?
Yes, they are.
So, in the general fund that we've been through everything twice, I think what we need to do now is... Max is... Well, this is probably also totally updated. So, we actually lost.
What's our total budget now? That right down there, well, at the very bottom, that's your county general.
Is that the same thing that others have? That 36-872-235? Isn't that one? What do you have, Max?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I need to make sure that my numbers are showing up in the place here. It was 22... Okay, nevermind. I'm sorry. It was 22.
It should be the... Yeah, the 35.
6872.
Additional over 24.
Okay, Barry and Max, do you... And Gary and Kathy, are you showing the same numbers?
I don't, but I have a...
So, what's...
It's 36-872-235. And Kathy, how close are you?
Mine's 37-297-320, but I may not have adjusted something in here.
Mine's thirty-seven, two-ninety-seven, three-twenty, but I may not have adjusted something in here.
Down here is not that large, so I don't know if everybody's.
Okay.
I need to look at it.
Okay. We gotta, we gotta take a look at the balancing, we also, um, to, I'm not sure that we took a look, can, can we real quickly take a look at council budget?
So I still have a question. I'll wait to get down.
I can't remember what we did in training, so we've got twenty-five thousand in that line, that's probably. The training salaries that we let people use. We've got twenty-five thousand. I couldn't remember what it was.
Is Casa a separate budget? Because I didn't see it at the bottom, but I might be in the wrong spot. Here's my notes. Oh, it's down here. Call it twelve thirteen.
Yeah, no, you, I don't, all of these are only salaries, so they're not in here.
So what we have, a contingency.
Is that person in the.
Is less than what we had last year, by almost a hundred thousand.
So these have been given in the salary.
Whereas.
She has six forty-one.
It's five forty-one, five forty-three, six oh four.
It's the same as twenty-four.
Is that right, or is that right?
They both said that, they all said that.
Twenty twenty-four.
That's twenty twenty-four, six forty-one.
Two thousand plus, and that one for some reason.
A hundred thousand plus.
Which line you on?
The miscellaneous contingency, thirty-three, nine fifty.
What's in there for twenty-five is the same as twenty-four.
Up on the screen, it says six forty-one.
Yeah.
Nine oh four.
For what, twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Oh, weird.
Twenty-four, line says five forty-three, six oh four.
Yeah, mine says two.
Five forty-three, six oh four.
Says that in on theirs.
You guys are saying?
Five forty-three, six oh four, it says the same.
And that's this year, one time.
One month.
Yeah, up there it says six forty-one, nine oh four.
And that's our.
Twenty twenty-four.
Well. There's a column, adjust twenty, twenty-four adjusted is ninety-eight, three. Which would make the five forty-three probably.
There's something with that spreadsheet, because you're showing, uh, one-time expenditures at four point two million.
It's at three million.
There was an adjusted, it was encumbered.
Now, the one-time expenditures, I'm not sure what the.
It never did get deappropriated.
Well, they, they're, they're showing the twenty-four adjusted at one point two-one-nine, or, yeah, one point two.
But still, yeah.
And that court service supplemental, two seventy-three, eight sixty-one, is what we've spent. Anything.
Nothing for next year. There's nothing in there for next year at all.
No, but we're over. Twenty twenty-four says the budget's ninety-nine, five oh two. So.
We've never been told exactly what was spent for the capital case. And where that got paid from, and if we need to cover things, I've had. I don't understand. Do you know what the capital case, what cost like?
They were paying some of that out of court.
They were paying some out of their budgets, I think.
They may not.
I don't know, they were spending a lot of money.
When the judges were in here, we asked, and April, it was good to tell people that they had most of the bills, they all up here, you know, like they'd been paying about.
He said it's good.
Yeah, I think that's, I don't think they overspent what they had in there.
Okay. Well, it was spread out over a couple of years.
So what's, what's those two seventy-threes?
Yeah, that's one, uh, court services supplemental, says we've spent two hundred and seventy-three thousand out of it, and our budget is ninety-nine, and there's nothing for next time.
What fund did you take that out of?
What, Mark?
What fund did you take that out of, uh, which budget?
Cal, well, we're just looking at council's budget right now, and that line's thirty-three, nine fifty-six.
They're gonna say we spent two hundred and seventy.
Says we've spent two hundred and seventy-three thousand this year.
So maybe I was wrong, or I was seeing, I think that's it.
That's about what.
I'm almost stopped, if it's in the red, but I have to go look.
Yeah, well, it says our budget was ninety-eight.
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine. And that we've spent, so we just need to make sure.
Need to find out.
If that's something that we need to cover, something from the contingency or something.
We were paying it all out here.
I think we did, I think we did, that's why it's two seventy.
I know some of the stuff they use their budget for, but it's, obviously it's in the red quite a bit, and we need to take care of that.
Who's the department head of that?
You're finance manager.
Yeah, I, and we knew, I knew going into, we knew.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to transfer into this line item, we had no idea what the capital case was going to. Um, well, we.
What was gonna happen.
We kinda had an idea, it's just we didn't know exactly what it was gonna be, so.
Well, we've only spent four hundred and one thousand out of our one-time.
Well, and I will take this amount over a couple million, which is probably gonna cost them.
Yeah, we were anticipating that that gone to trial, it was gonna be a huge number.
Yeah.
So, okay, what I think we need to do is find the differences between Max and the auditor's office and where we're at, uh, exactly. Next time, I think we probably need to talk about, have a discussion, and maybe want to do that in. Personnel, as far as what we might be able to.
It's a finance thing, it's much.
Yeah, and, and we can, we can do it in two weeks.
Yeah, I was thinking that.
At finance.
Like we did last time, after our meetings.
Yeah.
Continue this discussion.
Don't forget, they have to advertise.
Now, what's the advertising date?
For a meeting.
No, they have to advertise the budget.
The budget.
It's in my office, and I can't tell you.
It's a bit like, it's in September though, right, that you have to advertise it?
I think that's what it is.
Okay, but, but after the council getting.
Something that's wrong.
Okay.
Since our meeting is in September, we don't want to miss that.
Well, we need to, we need to decide that.
Can you go get that date and let us know, so we know if our meeting is appropriate?
Payroll increase needs to go, find the date on the high end, and there.
Yes, yes.
Before we advertise.
You gotta go find the date for us, so we know.
So in the one-time expenditure line, is that twelve or one million, two nineteen, four ninety-nine, was that how we reduced it? Which doesn't show. What is that, maybe?
He's talking to you. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
She's facing out. Okay, what do you want it?
Our one-time money, it says.
That we've spent just three thousand, three million.
It's been downed. Is that where you're at?
We are.
We're not the three, not the three million, but then we had to reduce it now.
We reduced it by like fifteen something like that.
Two different times we passed something to reduce that, but yet it's.
See the, see the twenty-four adjusted at one point two-one-nine, that's what.
Yeah. What is in here is the actual twenty-four original budget brought over. It, the adjusted is, has nothing to do with.
But isn't that what we did, we, we.
What is that?
The stage made us take it down to like half.
Oh, I remembered one point, I was off on.
You took one point five million.
I remember something with it.
So what is that, what's that one, or one million, two nineteen, four ninety-nine?
That's the adjusted amount.
That's not an addition, that's a subtraction.
Well, we had reduced it three million dollars down.
But we only reduced it by fifteen something. But this is showing the original was three thousand, or three million. That was the adjusted, and that ended up being what the difference was, that's not a minus.
We didn't add money to that account.
Remember, remember there was, you started out three million, and remember you.
At the very end.
Something over a million, but then you paid it out of ARBA. I think that number still shows the encumbrance.
Yeah, I think that.
That's the encumbrance amount.
One point two-one-nine is the encumbrance, and that's why it shows the total budget being four million, two nineteen.
Correct, that's right.
Here's the thing from Wayne, I don't remember trying to look it.
Before it's. Okay, Mark.
October twelfth is the last day to post it, so it would be ten days before that. Little legal notice. November eighth is the last date to submit the budgets to Gateway.
But we don't advertise it till October.
We don't advertise until ten days.
Last year was later than that.
No.
Ten days before.
It was in September second, just said, they've moved it back. He just told us ten days before October second, right?
Twelve.
October twelfth, oh. It, it's later this year than what it was last year, it's close to the end of September.
Okay, we don't have to advertise it to them, we're fine, but, um, this assumes no pay increases at all. So in council contingency, that needs to be added in before we. If, if we don't know what that increase is going to be, it needs to be in council contingency until.
Yeah.
We determine it, and, and that's calculated for every employee.
We do that now, so we can put it.
I can't put it.
We can't forward anything to Gateway till you do that, because we're not gonna know what the salaries are supposed to be.
You won't know what the salaries are until we decide what the salaries are.
That's correct, but if you put an amount in.
Eight and a half dollars into contingency.
Cover that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we just need to do that before advertising, we do it now, we can do it next meeting.
And I think he asked if you can do it now.
I'm asking if you can do it now? We're gonna send the budgets to Gateway, the estimates tomorrow.
Wayne Hudson is wanting to know what our totals of each fund is tomorrow. Because we're doing this throughout, I basically have to allow help me push a couple buttons, and it'll automatically go to Gateway.
So pick a number.
Should we go high, so it may.
Yeah, we have to go high, to make sure we get the.
Exactly.
The max. Two point five?
Yeah.
Put three and more safe.
Are you a Miss Lane's contingent, where?
Yeah, put six million instead of three million.
That's one time expenditure.
That's one time.
Million.
Yeah, either, either way.
So which one?
Let's, we typically put it in council contingency, so wherever that, whatever that line item is.
I had three million, I had three million, five forty-three.
Yeah.
So three. Which one?
Yes. Everybody understand, I mean, we don't know what.
We don't know what it's gonna be yet.
What it's gonna be, but it has to be.
We have to advertise more.
We have to advertise more, we can go down, but we can't go up.
Did that increase the total? Was that total still showing thirty-six million?
Sure. Anything you put in there is gonna increase the total.
Oh, it didn't, it didn't update the total.
It should, it will.
It has to.
You can't add six hundred thousand dollars and not increase the total.
Well, if the formulas are not right, it didn't, so the total at the bottom of the page did not update, when three million.
Do it now.
I'll bet you it didn't.
It just did, Mark. It just, it just did.
That's what I said.
So Debbie has a question on the non.
Six hundred thousand dollar increase, not increasing the total.
Nobody's arguing with anybody.
Yeah. The adopted cannot be higher than the published, so you made arrangements for county general. What about the non-county general funds that have payroll, how do you handle that? Because last year, we had the salary ordinance to actually have the real deal in, and I understand what you're doing with county general, but how do I handle that with the others?
We have other employees, in fact, we got a list today, there are sixty of them, that are not under county general.
Are they included in that contingency amount?
No. I'd say you need to increase each one by ten percent.
Last year, we had the salary order in it, so I had.
That was salary ordinance, just not, yeah.
But not by the time I get them in Gateway.
So the non-general fund stuff is under the same criteria as the general fund as far.
As far as I understand it.
Yes, each fund.
If that's the case, we need, we need to add a line in each one of those.
But we haven't done that in the past.
We've never done that before.
Uh, no. We used to.
How do we do it?
We used to.
What we used to did just?
We put, uh, a line item in.
In their.
Each budget for.
Each budget that was.
Or raises.
Salaries.
Salary increases or salary adjustments, something like that.
So we could, we could take the total of personnel, add a percentage. Percentage of that. By ten percent.
Maybe we did.
We did have a, a salary adjustment.
Yeah. Yeah. There is that line item. Why wouldn't that show up now?
Because we took it out before the.
I didn't think we could take line items out.
Well, if, if you don't approve the budget.
If you approve it, you take it out before you.
But doesn't the line description still show?
They keep telling us line item, why don't you can take a line item out?
We used to be able to take it outside of.
I, I have, I don't understand that you can't take.
Can you? Can you, can you bring up the highway budget?
Or you can look at nine one one, which we just had. Any of them. Nine one one is personnel of seven hundred.
There used to be, and the one thousand's a line item.
Salary adjustment line.
Is it because we didn't do that on last, until last year?
Um, that, that could well be it, I don't know.
Cause remember Kimberly Walton made all those spreadsheets and.
But it could also be that if you, if you never approved the budget with that, with that in it, that it didn't become a permanent line item in the budget. Think that was it, but in a few years.
So Debbie, you do.
There it is, right there.
Salary is.
Salary adjustment.
Oh, okay.
That's highway.
That's highway.
And, and we have to advertise it this early?
We are going at the request of.
Wayne Hudson?
Yeah, the, the Gateway people, they want us to submit the estimate of this, of your budgets to him tomorrow.
The estimate, but not the, but not the advertised?
No, the total of the budget, I don't know what he's gonna do with it particularly, but uh, I'm resisting him right now because I'm, I got questions for him. It has to be answered tomorrow. So the, one way of doing this would be, I hate to do it. Go through additional appropriations after the first of the year. We did that lecture with the capital bridge fund, I came back to you, found an error in the math, came back to you, did an additional preparations for all the bridges. That'd be a royal pee in the butt to do with all of the different funds that we have, people that are gonna get salaries.
The one thing I really don't understand, he says the amounts I give him tomorrow will like be in a different area than what I, I'm not happy to take these over to Gateway tomorrow. Um, I guess the question I have to you, when would be the soonest you could do the salary ordinance? Is there any, the, the solution would be if the salary ordinance can be done, then I could have the real deal in there, that would really help.
If we decide, we need to decide that our next meeting on our race is gonna be probably September fourth.
Can't decide that till we know how much money we need to start up.
But then it takes a little while to get the salary ordinance started. I think typically we went to October.
Yeah.
We haven't done it this early ever.
If you can get it before the half-stones and date that would be.
October.
October twelfth.
I don't know, cause I have it, it was all this one week to do it.
Well, and I went one week and were to be able to get it in and double check it.
December or December.
Council.
How comfortable are you?
In October.
How comfortable are you? You've been through the budget twice. How comfortable are you with the thing in that you now have as your budget for twenty-five? You're sitting on, what, thirty-six million?
Thirty-nine million.
Is that what, I can't read it.
Well, it was thirty-nine with the.
With the added three million for salaries.
The extra three.
Okay, your budget for thirty-four ended up about thirty-four million and some change, so you're looking at a.
No, it was like thirty.
No, we reduced it. It was thirty-six million, then we cut it back, that's state tools we had, it was thirty-four million.
Oh, last year, yeah.
So we cut it back. The thirty-six million is what you ended up with to.
Thirty-six one one nine four nine.
Right, that's what you ended up with to, to have as a total budget that we submitted in the state. I had to cut it back to thirty-four million to get, make it what they would accept. If you had thirty-four million, last year you had thirty-four five some, something. And you're sitting on thirty-nine million now, and you're five million over.
It's thirty-six one, oh, thirty, okay, gotcha.
Thirty-four five was what was finally up there.
You're roughly five, and I'm just, cause I'm not looking at it. You're roughly thirty-five, you're five million, four million and a half, five million over. You don't know right now, because nobody's asked, you don't know what your income's gonna be. In a package I gave you several weeks ago, there were estimates of income in that.
We have estimates like in this, but we don't know for sure.
I don't know whether anybody looked at it or not.
Yeah.
But there were estimates of income in it that have changed since I gave you that information. We are still working on miscellaneous revenues, uh, all sorts of different incomes. And. Unlike past years, we're gonna make that an exact figure as best we can. Past years, it was estimated way too long, which drives up the tax rate. And I don't wanna do that. So we're, we're estimating revenue sales that are gonna be. Six, seven, six, five and six million dollars more than what we're estimated past years. What you're working on is the expense side of a budget. I'm working on how to pay for it.
Yeah.
So that if you're comfortable with what you have up there. And it's you, the only thing that you don't have is salaries. I can estimate what the salary increase is gonna cost, like if it's, I take the total salary times three percent, four percent, whatever it is. And estimate what it's gonna cost, now what you have in budgets is not just the general fund, it's Coomb, it's the highway, Coomb building. There are five or six health department, there's five or six different funds that come under that cap that the state's gonna give you. So that as I estimate revenues changing. And you come up with a budget that's increased over last year's. I'll know. If we, whatever I set into the state's gonna be more accurate than it has been in the past. Example, they estimated last year, two years ago, whatever it was, six million dollars in miscellaneous revenue. We're gonna make two million dollars in interest this year. That, that estimate is nowhere close to what it ought to be. And that has an effect on whether you have enough money to fund that budget.
I don't have anything that anyone around here disagrees with.
I know, Bella, I'm saying that I'm not finished with that, and they haven't seen it yet to accept it. So that, uh. And if you're five million dollars over, I'm gonna add that much in, that. Increase in estimated revenue.
Does that count the one-time extra money this year that we're getting on two different fronts?
Mark said he, he didn't see that, that we received that.
What's that? I can't read.
Um, came out in May, probably about eight hundred thousand.
Increase in income tax.
Yeah.
A, a supplement.
Yeah, because they had held too much at the state.
That was, I think, I don't understand, that was one shot.
Sure, that happened every year.
But where is two million in interest?
What shows up is in your cash balance on June thirtieth. If it's done before June thirtieth, and it's an excessive amount of money, it shows in your cash balance. If it's not before June thirtieth, it will be, well, an estimate of what we're gonna receive this year.
To be received, this is, there are two pieces, and I ask you if you had received, may, if we had received that yet, you said you didn't think so.
I didn't, no, we didn't, if I, if I remember correctly, we got it after the, the June thirtieth date. But since it's an eighteen-month budget and not twelve, that money will then be reflected against what, you know, spent out of that. Thirty-nine million dollars.
Yeah, and, but if it's, if it's one-time money, that doesn't mean that.
No, that's correct.
We can build it into something that reoccurs every year. If that could be the same as interest, we can't count on receiving that amount of interest.
No.
Because when interest rates go back down.
But I still have to estimate it, and it has to show in.
Doesn't mean that we have to spend it. Doesn't mean that we have to, to spend those two pieces.
I'm not saying that it gives you an opportunity to spend more money. What I'm saying is it gives, it gives the county an opportunity to offset what you're gonna spend and run it down to help bring down the tax rate. If you count it as money you're gonna spend, then the tax rate's still high enough to cover that expenditure. The tax rate will be figured on assessed value, including what you're, with California, with, with what you're gonna spend. And right now you're sitting on thirty-nine million dollars. I'm gonna come back and estimate the revenue that the county's gonna get.
And, and we can't do anything on salaries until we know that?
Well, that fluctuation we settled on December thirty-first, the county, the state might come in. I don't know how to explain it differently. What you're doing now is not what's gonna end, the state is gonna end up agreeing with. They can change whatever you do, they can reduce the.
I know that, I know that.
Yes, and it. This budget's not yours, what Bowlin is, they, they can change, they changed the bridge fund on the, on the.
No, we need you to tell us what's our estimated revenue.
That's what we're gonna talk to him about tomorrow. And that's why I'm really reluctant to give him anything that he's gonna use in Gateway. And I don't know why he's doing that, because we don't have to give him anything until October twelfth. I, I don't understand why he wants to do this, but I'm gonna find out. The dates of October twelfth. And November eighth, you have, you could, November eighth is when the budgets have to be submitted.
Right.
A lot can change between now and then.
And every year has.
Huh?
And every year has, we don't, we don't finalize anything until the second.
And it will be finalized then, because of November eighth to December thirty-first, something else will happen. So what you're gonna do, you're gonna, you're gonna have to give me a budget for the county. Then we will try and fund that budget. And.
You're gonna have to tell us, Mark.
I know, and I, I tried.
What we do is, we, we tell you what expenses are.
I understand. A month ago, I gave you a package, it had all kind of information in that package on estimated revenues, what we were gonna get, what the state was gonna allow. And I bet you everything, you might have looked at it, but I'll bet you nobody else did.
I did, Mark, I can't recite what it said, but I did look through it.
And, and.
And you said a lot of things have changed since then.
Things have changed, and they'll change between now and the end of the year. What I'm dealing with is what Wayne Hudson wants me to do tomorrow. I don't see the reason for it, we have another two or three weeks to be able to, for you people to work out what you need to work out in your budget. And I'm not telling you, right now, I, I'm not gonna give him the information he's asking for. I just don't want to, because it locks us into something that can change too much between now and October twelfth. And the, the big difference is gonna be salaries.
And that, that, that's up to you, you know, as far as.
But I'm, I'm just letting you know that I, I am not comfortable with giving him figures when I don't have a budget that you haven't finished. Or don't even have an estimate on.
Well. Um. We, we need to see, and make sure the numbers compare here. And, and what we're off in the next time that we meet.
See, I don't see, he wants this information, I don't see why he can't tell me what I'm allowed to turn in to them. If, if it's thirty-four million or thirty-six, whatever, and yours are on thirty-nine, he oughta be able to tell me. With the, with the information he has on assessed values, uh.
And he, he will eventually, but that never has occurred until.
Yeah, but he wants me to turn, he wants me to give it to him, I wanna know what, what his estimate's gonna be. I don't wanna turn in something that, that locks this county in a, uh, an expense that's not high enough. Because there's no going back, not all of that, that advertising, I think all of the tax rate.
That's what we talked about here on the general fund, and we'll need to do that on every budget that has employees. But it does not sound like we have to do that, the date hasn't moved up for that, correct?
I don't know, I don't know.
I think what you're telling him tomorrow can't lock us in, you're just giving him that verbally, it's not put into Gateway.
I am gonna make sure that in my mind, what I'm giving him information off on tomorrow does not lock this county into anything.
Right, and that's critical.
And I am not sure of it tonight. The only way you lock it in is what you put in Gateway. And that's what he, that's what he wants me to do, is put it in Gateway. And I'm saying. I don't have all the information I need to put, to set that budget to Gateway and have the states are looking at it. And I.
Yeah, it's not a state major date, so I.
I don't know what.
Get that iron out with what.
Yeah, you had to get that.
Anyway, that's where I am with it.
And not want to obligate the county to something that, that's good.
I'm rather, I'm just, I've done this before, I'm not gonna give them an opportunity to use something that I can't change.
I appreciate you understanding what I'm talking about, letting me know what county general wants and confirming it, thank you.
Yeah, at some point, before advertising, we have to put, put something in all, all the budgets as a salary adjustment. We looked on here, and now there is one for highway, I'm sure there's one for any, any budget that has employees.
And so can you?
It's, it's what we.
Do you have an estimate?
We added an amount to council's budget, you know, for that.
Questions to him.
Estimate of what you wanna, what you wanna increase those salaries by.
Midpoint, all that stuff, I don't know.
But if you just say for advertising purposes to go ahead and. Increase them, that one line item, by ten percent, uh, salary lines.
If you know, in the highway department, what the increase is gonna be for salaries, we can stick that amount in. Bitch them or something, I don't care where you put it.
We don't know what it is, and if you look over here in twenty twenty-four spend, we reduce it to zero when we determine what the salary adjustments are. So it's all in there for.
Temporarily.
Temporarily.
But if you said it's gonna be ten percent of salaries.
Ten percent of the one thousand. Of the one thousand, because you got payroll taxes as well, and, and other items related to payroll. So in each of the budgets that have.
Personnel.
Personnel. And here it's line item one zero 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 one, salary adjustments.
That's what it is in the, same one.
So you want me to add ten percent?
Take it, take it times ten percent. And put that in each of the non-general fund budgets. That's what we do before advertising every year. So. You know, obviously, it's not that number, but we, you know, we can't go up.
No, you can lower it, but you can't take it higher.
That's right.
So.
Just so the audience knows, we're not raising salaries ten percent.
Yeah, seriously.
Somebody's gonna know it before we get home.
Mr. King, thank you, guys. You're not, we will discuss after council meeting. Uh, on September four. on September fourth, uh, more on the budget, and perhaps have a discussion in employee increases. If on the agenda lobby, um, there will be somebody coming from, um, Sugar Creek, packing company, the tax abatement committee met and voted to make a recommendation to approve that payment. Somebody will be coming here for that, and then the full council will vote on that.
Do we need to block off all morning for council eight to ten, like you did this morning?
I, I, I think we probably
That's a good idea. Keeps us from coming back here another night.
If we get done before then, but I would say go ahead and block off till noon.
Are you gonna be a part of the finance committee, or part of personnel, or part of the council meeting?
Part of finance.
Usually we make it finance.
I think we'll
Finance.
Finance.
So we could do personnel after.
Personnel will come right after.
With finance, and you'll do budget as part of finance.
Any questions up tonight?
I have a question. I'm making a request. Who, whoever is gonna deal with, I'd like to deal with somebody on council about these budgets. So that I know who to go to, and I can explain what I find out tomorrow to somebody.
Someone needs a finance chair. Yeah. Just send it to me, but I'll copy everybody else, or if you wanna copy everyone else as well.
Person, so I can go through this stuff and tell you what my estimate's gonna be. So that you, you can be on, you know.
Yeah, once, once you have the revenue estimates, we need, we need to, we need to share that. You know, Kathy and I talked, and I think Kathy did it for a number of years. I mean, we got a report every month that showed us what the projected general fund balance was going to be at the end of the year all twelve months, and, and, you know, I, I know Jeff was there then, and that was very helpful, so
Absolutely.
Well, one better fiddle miles.
Both the revenue and the expenses.
Absolutely, you cannot deal with just the, what you have on that board up there. That's just one
We all understand that.
Yeah, we know.
And I wanna share that, tell me who I'm gonna deal with, and then
Send it to me, and you copy everyone else, but, but send it, you know, send it to me.
If you talk to somebody on council about it. You don't go do it by email.
We have tried several times to talk to members of council. Whether we don't communicate it right, I don't hear responses back, but I'm just asking tonight to tell me who I deal with.
Well, last week when you called, Mark, I, I called probably ten after twelve. Left you a message.
Right.
Didn't hear anything, and somebody said that you, you normally only hear it till twelve.
If that's possible.
You know, I, I left you a message, and I can't do anything more.
I understand, and what I'm, what I'm saying is, if once I know one person to deal with, I will make sure you get the information that I
I, I think the natives are getting restless here.
Make a motion to the jury.
All in favor?
Aye.